Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is June 1st, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Welsh.
We come here tonight to celebrate the beauty of the city, the beauty of the weather that we have, and the beauty of the people who live here. We celebrate the fact that we have a government that listens to its people, in which we have a voice, and which we can speak and make suggestions. We celebrate tonight a government in which we can elect our officials and our heard. Please join with me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
... under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Costin.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. I do have a couple of changes that I would like to incorporate into tonight's meeting. First off is the Youth Council Quarterly Report. I believe that is 92 item. I'd like to move that up just before citizens input. And also, I would like to add a item for introduction on tonight's meeting. As we, many of us know that last week when I approved the agenda for tonight's meeting, I removed ordinance 51-22. The reason that that item was removed is staff failed to keep council informed, apprised of exactly what was happening. A lot of that particular topic was a surprise to all of us. So for those reasons, I removed it from the agenda to be an introduction tonight. Now, since then, staff has kept all of council informed of exactly the goings-on as far as finding a location for the Cape Coral Rowing Club. I believe this week, the location has actually been changed to an alternate location, which in my opinion is a better location. And I think it would be a location that is less impactful to the residents who live nearby in that particular area. So with that being said, I think there are some additional items in the next two weeks that council will be addressing with staff. But we will, tonight, I will make a recommendation that we add the new 51-22 ordinance in the agreement that was changed from the original staff presentation last week, that we add that back onto introductions tonight. So with that being said, that is the only changes that I have. Councilmember Hayden, I see your light on as well.
Yeah, and those were both mine about the Youth Council and ordinance 51-22. And Madam City Attorney, do we need a motion to add ordinance 51-22 back onto the agenda as an introduction?
With the changes.
With the change, okay.
And that's the new...
Correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
Would that be the last introduction? Would that be on last introduction tonight?
That would be for the introduction tonight and a public hearing for June 15th.
Or is it number four, I believe it is? Four or five will be the last introduction.
It'll be five.
Number five. I've already had that in my agenda packet.
And I agree with you on your point about the change for the rowing club. I think this location is much better. And hopefully during our discussions over the next couple of weeks, we can, we can come to a solution that makes most happy with, with this location. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, is there a...
Motion to approve the agenda as corrected.
Second.
And the addition.
Second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Nay.
Costin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Madam City Clerk, I have another, and maybe I should have done this as a part of my motion as well. Citizens input time tonight. It looks like we have a large crowd here. So I wanted to check with council members on citizens input to find out, do we want to keep it at three minutes, or do we want to make that three minutes less? So I'll open that up for a discussion amongst council. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I think hopefully we know most of you here support the, which would be a temporary location for the rowing club until the permanent facility is built at, I believe Tropicana. So in a situation like this, I don't believe in changing the time, and I believe if it extends over an hour, it should. But, you know, for all of you to remember, if you're, if you're in agreement and you've designated spokespeople to talk for you, then that's great. You know, we, we know how you feel. We've received the emails this week. So if you have a certain number of people that are going to talk for you, that will be great, but I see no reason to change the, the time limits.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would concur what Councilmember Hayden said, and I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for clarifying, because I think there was a lot of misinformation out there amongst the rowing club families. And, you know, please know that especially those of us that were on this council in 2018, when we had all the public hearings for Tropicana Park, we all still support you. And so just know that. And I am grateful that we came to a resolution quickly. And I think, you know, as Councilmember Hayden said, if you've designated spokespeople, then I'm fine keeping it as well. And also, you're welcome to come back during public hearing when we actually, you know, have you all to, your item will be up for the actual vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, is it correct for me to assume that there will be a time during introductions for people to, there's no, so in introduction, there's no way to talk about it? We don't open the floor for public input during an introduction?
So under the introduction item, it's a first reading required by statute. The public hearing that you would set on the 15th would be the time for public input to be received by city council.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't putting, if there was another time for them to talk later in the, in the meeting, that that would be the correct time. So I'm okay with keeping three minutes. That's what we're here for.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Can I see a show of hands of everybody that wants to speak tonight? Just to, us to get a feel for how many people? That's not that bad.
Yeah, I think we're fine.
So we're good?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll keep the, the time for citizens input like we always do at three minutes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item six, recognitions and achievements. Tonight, there will be a presentation for city employees for years of service. First off, I will let our city clerk give us all the information, and then I'll follow it up with a comment afterwards.
Yes, Your Honor, before I read the names, I just want to confirm in the audience, are any of the recipients here? So we have 26 years of service for Jack Philip, 21 years of service Christine Montesino Menya, 24 years of service Karen Peppin, 24 years of service Virginia Lopez, 28 years of service Bennett Walker, and 30 years of service Michael Garjula.
In my understanding, Madam City Clerk, none of those individuals are here tonight?
It was relayed to me that they had current scheduled conflicts and were unable to attend.
Thank you. And just so council knows, in the, in the community, you know, I think most of these individuals that she just mentioned tonight has already retired. And I think that this is something that we have to make sure that we do before they retire. So this is a new program that I put together, working with the city manager. It's a mayor's recognition award that we will be giving out to employees of the city that are retiring with, with over 20 years of service, just to say thank you for, for their dedication and their work throughout their career here in the city of Cape Coral. So I'm glad to start this type of recognition program. I look forward to doing more of it into the future, just to be able to recognize our dedicated employees and thank them for their service to our community. Okay, we'll move on to the item seven, approval of the minutes.
Second.
What are you approving?
The minute.
Which one?
The first one.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 18th, 2022? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item 92, which is the Youth Council Quarterly Report, and I will turn that over to Councilmember Hayden, who's the liaison to the Youth Council.
Yes, I'd like to introduce, thank you all for showing up tonight. Do you, do you all have speaking parts this evening?
We will all be introducing ourselves, but be divided.
I will turn it over to Chair Bernau, who will begin, report on the activities of the Youth Council.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayden. I would just like to thank council members and Mr. Mayor for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak with you about our operations as a council. So we're just going to briefly introduce ourselves and then get into our report. So my name's Allison Bernau, and I'm a member of the Cape Coral City Youth Council.
I am Jasmine Little. I am also a member of the City Youth Council.
I'm Madeline Sinski. I'm an incoming senior at Oasis High School, and I am a senior on the Youth Council Board.
Hi, I'm Olivia Revlo. I'm a member of Youth Council, and I go to North Fort Myers High School.
Okay, so just to recap a little bit, recently we have had some changes as our seniors have moved on to college. And so we had the induction of our incoming juniors to council, two of them are here with us this evening, or this afternoon. We had the election of a new chair, that's me, and then our new vice chair is Vice Chair Little. So that's very exciting, and we're eager to move forward into next year with many new ideas. If I can just briefly say, I'm excited to see so many kids in the room. I feel like it's difficult sometimes. It's been a little discouraging as a kid growing up, serving at different committees and councils. Sometimes it can feel like it's overwhelmingly adults, and it's hard to see the future of our city, when the future of our city, who are the kids, don't really know about the meetings or don't have the opportunity to attend. So I'm really excited to see so many kids here participating in the operations of our city. So that's all I'm going to say, but thank you guys for coming.
So last spring, we had our spring gala held at Lee Kennedy Center. Our theme was intertwined and was based on the concept of combining different aspects of our city and celebrating how unique and functional each part is. We ended up donating all proceeds from our raffle and admissions to Blessings in a Backpack. At the beginning of our first meeting this new fiscal year, we donated $4,867.52 to the backpack program, and we presented the check at our meeting. For anyone who doesn't know, Blessings in a Backpack is an organization in our community that helps donate backpacks with food and other supplies to children who are in need.
We also completed as a council the FLC Community Cleanup Challenge, and this was a decision that we made to try to encourage ecological advocacy and participation within our community to clean up our community. And on March 12th, citizens were able to either help clean, clean up the community at the yacht club, or clean up their own section of the community and send it a picture with our hashtag. And it was very amazing, and it was very exciting to see so many people taking part and being part of their community.
So this is just an introduction to the current events we're working on and we're excited to share about. So we've been continuing with our Adopt a Row cleanups, where we pick up litter along the streets. They've been very successful in the past, and we continue to work on them. About every month, we do one. And then our projects, the juniors, which are now going to be our seniors, so this is the class of 2023's project right now, we are continuing to work with the art center, and we have recently been working with them to discuss mural ideas for the side of the building they requested.
And the senior project this past year, which has now been retired, is the work with special populations. Birdhouses created by members of this organization were featured as centerpieces at our spring gala, and we are excited as a council to encourage involvement within this organization that is no longer our senior project as our seniors have graduated.
So our Love Locks project, installing at a park, a new statue, is currently under review by a structural engineer who has offered to provide them their services to our project. We have offers from welders to help construct the framework placed in Founder's Park, and are currently working on scoping out the landscape in the area to find which area best suits our piece of art.
The future of Youth Council, we plan to continue working on our projects that benefit the community, and we hope to inspire youth to be more involved within the city. So that is pretty much all for us, and we are very grateful for this opportunity to speak with you. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions for the Youth Council? Thank you very much for the update and presentation. Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is citizens input. There's a maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters considered city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We will be utilizing the podium to my left. If you are going to be speaking, please just, you can line up on the back wall. Remember, you have three minutes. You only have one opportunity for citi, for citizens input. If you do have a sign tonight, because I was informed that some individuals brought signs, you're only allowed to display those signs if you are speaking at citizens input. You can't do that in the audience. And also, I just want to mention, there will be no applauding or no clapping. It's a business meeting, and we'll conduct a meeting in that fashion. So thank you. And ma'am, you're first. We got to make sure the mic's on. We could have someone from staff.
Working, yep.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy DeVille. I was here at the last meeting. I live in the Northwest Cape, off of Diplomat, and we were here basically to say that our, all of our freshwater boat ramps have been closed down, and we no longer have access to get in and out of the water, and our boats are effectively trapped now. My boat specifically needs to be taken out for maintenance, and we cannot do that. I'm used to being able to take it in and out, because we take our boat to the Gulf. Even if we take it, had to take it out, we have nowhere else to store it. We, that's why we have a dock. At, at this point, they said that they would, we spoke with the developer, or his name was Mike, I guess City Development, last time we were here, told him of our concerns. He said he would get back to us. We've made several attempts to contact him, multiple attempts, Mark and myself, and we've heard nothing back, gotten no answers. Since then, they've padlocked and chained off the boat ramp, and there's a big boom at the end of it, so you can't use it no matter what. We're just looking for an answer here, because I mean, we bought freshwater property to be able to boat, and now they've taken our access away. So I want to know what's going to be done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Mark Harper. I also live on the same water that she's speaking about. I do have some pictures of the boat dock, that, well, boat launch that they had put in. The launch had been put in about three years ago, when we had an issue before, I called the councilman, and they installed the dock for us, so we could have access. Now, they chained, chained it off again, as you can see in the pictures right here. There's no way for us to get in and out. All the boats that are in the water are trapped in there. What do we do when storms come? What happens to our boats then? What about just general maintenance? I mean, if all's they have to do is take the cord down the chain, so we could get in and out. They dug the front out next to the road, so we can't use that at all. There's just absolutely no way for us to get in and out of the water any longer, and they're not just doing it on our canal, they're doing it on all the freshwater canals there. We fish with the Cape Coral Bass Club, and we go weekend to weekend, different canal chains and fish. That's just a hobby that everybody does here in Cape Coral. That's why we're drawn to this area, is to use the water. We're charged waterfront taxes, and we can't even use the water. Doesn't make any sense. We all have boat docks, can't have a boat? I just don't understand. We just want to get to a resolution, so we're able to use our docks and our property.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Renee Sheal, and I've lived at my residence for 30 years. I'm on a saltwater canal off Country Club. On my street, I have the only fallout drain, storm drain fallout, the only one on the entire street. Now, I've had two failures at the storm drain that the city fixed previously, and I had a, I had problems with the hurricane because of the ill repairs that were done, and my whole backyard blew up like there was a bomb that went off. There's, the storm drain appears to be pulled apart. There's rebar going through the storm drain. There's an old discarded drain that's buried, I believe to be underneath the current's fallout pipe. The old one during the first repair, I think was propped up underneath, according to Mike Islesham, that's his opinion. Now, when Mayor Hernandez was in charge, Mike gave him a timeline of events, and I heard nothing. It's been probably over three months now. Now, Mr. Gunter, you're the new mayor, and I know you remember me from, I have been coming here since 2017. I took a break when I was sick, and I'm back again. And you suggested that I hire an out-of-the-county engineer, which I did, one that was based in Tampa. It cost me $1,500. Now, there's a report. Okay, Mike Islesham passed the buck along to Wendy Williams, who came out with some person that was involved in the first repair that was done. And all the guy did was measure the wall. Now, the wall where the storm drain comes out, it's ready to give away, because the drain is in almost the middle of that slab on the seawall. And it's sinking and pushing out, and this is the same thing that happened twice before. Now, nobody's doing anything. I'm under, I'm forced to believe that it's because I'm a single 62, 63-year-old woman that is disabled, that I just get this treatment of ignoring, you know, doing stupid stuff, pushing the buck to somebody else. It's aggravating.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. John Bashaw, Northwest Cape Coral. Back in 2019, the NWNA solicited input from the residents who were going through the North Two UEP installation. And we put together a document called Lessons Learned. And essentially, the document is a summary of the, the residents' experience during the North Two implementation. And the form of the document, really pretty simple. What's the issue? How do we know it to be true? And what are some suggestions that we could possibly employ to solve the problem? We submitted this to the city, and I'm happy to report that last week, we met with, got to get this right, William Corbett, Elizabeth Ellis, and Audrey Goodwin of the Office of Capital Improvements. And they've agreed to incorporate as many of these lessons learned as are feasible in future expansions. The takeaway from that meeting, we agreed that we were going to work with the Public Information Officer and began a steady, slow drip of information about future UEPs. And the first thing that we're going to focus on are trees, because one of the lessons learned, some of the residents had trees removed that were in the right of way. So we want to start communicating that. The second thing I want to do is I want to thank you for acting on the email that you received from Carolyn Jones, who's an NWNA member regarding the DND tackled docks which have been rebuilt. And I think we've got a slide of the before and after. I hope we do. Yeah, there is the DND docks before and the DND docks after. So what happened? An email came up to council. Some of you jumped on it and sent it to Michael Chisen. In his typical fashion, he jumped on it. The miracle was, that was done in about a week and a half. That's an example of the sort of thing we can do in this city if we all work together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Karen Kanzerski, and I have been a homeowner in Cape Coral since 2011. Our city's $60 million park bond project has been planned on a very different demographic than what our fast-growing, more youthful city is now, and certainly will be by the time these parks are finally completed. I would like to bring to your attention page 27 of the City of Cape Coral's Parks Master Plan that was developed for the purpose of identifying facilities, levels of service targets for the population of 175,000 people in 2015 versus the future population of 400,000. This master plan shows a level of service target for one pool for every 50,000 people. This report identified a three-pool deficit for the 175,000 people and an eight-pool need for a population of 400,000. Yet, the $60 million bond park project did not plan for even $1 to be spent on any pool or even improve what we have. Also worth noting is that Lee County built a community pool on Pine Island, where today's population is approximately 5,900 people, and offers better facilities than the extremely overused Cape Coral High School pool. I urged in my letter of April 7th to all of you that our city's leadership, as our city's leadership, you needed to witness what Charlotte County has provided at the world-class aquatic and recreational center at Centennial Park. Their residents have a 50-meter pool that allows for every aspect of swimming to occur, from youngsters taking their first-time lifesaving swim lessons, to the elderly who may need handicap pool entry, to the swimmer who practices every day and has Olympic dreams, and indoors being able to enjoy an air-conditioned rec center. and indoors being able to enjoy an air-conditioned rec center. For basketball, pickleball, walking, and even a gym where home-school children can't participate in physical education. The planners there have provided for everybody's physical fitness needs. To duplicate this facility here in Cape Coral would be a blessing. Such a recreational facility can have a huge economic impact on our community. Charlotte County has reported that very impact for fiscal year 2021. Nineteen point six million in county revenue for all of their programs, two hundred and sixty-four thousand visits to their recreational facilities, and over ninety thousand visits to their aquatic facilities. I would like to ask Mayor Gunther to undertake the development of a task group to investigate and begin planning process-
Have to try to wrap it up, ma'am.
Yes, I'm trying. For our city to have a community aquatic center. This task group needs to have a timeline and goal-setting mission for there to be positive impact and constructive outcome. If this type of project doesn't get an initial start soon, there will be currently no local acreage available for construction of such a site.
Thank you, your time's up. If you'd like to forward that statement to all of us by email, we'd be glad to read it in entirety.
Hello, and I want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. My name is Edward Collins, I'm the head coach at the Swim Florida Pool, using the Cape Coral High School Pool. We presently have five high schools, we have one swimming pool. We can't host any meets in our pool, because the pool isn't deep enough, we can't use the starting blocks for the high school meets, they have to start any meets they hold in the water. We have to go elsewhere. Just to give you a little background on swimming, this is another Olympic year coming up, the United States gets very interested in swimming at this time. I was very fortunate to be with the Badger Swim Club in New York, where we produced five Olympic champions. And it's amazing to watch a swimmer like Rick Carey start as a young age grouper, and work himself all the way to winning the Olympics and, winning three gold medals in Los Angeles. We have an opportunity in this state and in this city to produce Olympic swimmers. We have already at our Cape Pool, swimming in a twenty-five yard pool, had a number of swimmers reach the top twenty in the country in their age group, and able to travel to Washington, Los Angeles, and the Carolinas to participate in national meets. And we're swimming against kids who are swimming in fifty-meter pools, and we're training in a twenty-five yard pool and competing with those kids. You may not know a whole lot about swimming, because it is a difficult sport to explain if you're on the inside, and the people on the outside don't know what's going on. But if you watch, it's the only sport that you get yelled at for breathing. But you do come home cleaner than you went. So it is a really good sport, and a study, I'll finish on this, a study of graduate scholarships going to athletes, swimmers by far get more scholarship, graduate scholarships than any other sport. So they learn a lot about life and dedication and commitment. So I thank you for any consideration you have for building a better facility in Cape.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Donna Muir, I'm with the Swim Florida Swim Club. As they say, picture's worth a thousand words, and I have the pictures, so you can actually see what the showcase facilities that are located in Port Charlotte, Centennial Park, versus the non-showcase pool facility in Cape Coral look like for comparison. The sport of swimming needs to stop being overlooked. There's a picture of Centennial Park's fifty-meter pool, a state-of-the-art scoreboard and timing system to ensure the accuracy of swimmers' times. Separate restrooms and locker room facilities for the athletes, spectators, and coaches, versus Cape Coral High School's twenty-five yard pool. No warm-up or cool-down area, other than three and a half foot deep shallow well that is ten yards in length. Bathroom facilities with no locker rooms. The chain-link fences how the swimmers hang their swim gear and backpacks, because they don't have an actual locker room to store their belongings. No scoreboard or timing system, which means swimmers' times rely solely on stopwatches. Board two is the Centennial Park has an aquatic administrative office. Separate locker room and bathroom showers for the athletes. Port Charlotte's administrative and community center adjoining pool versus Cape Coral's administrative equipment building shelter for severe weather, which is actually three hundred and eighty-four square feet. If you look at the size comparison of the buildings, you'll notice that our shelter cannot safely accommodate with the number of swimmers we have on our team during any given practice time. Board three is starting block technology. Centennial Park has twenty total high-tech starting blocks, ten on each end of the pool. They have ten lanes for competition, and additional ten lanes for warm-up and cool-down for competitive swimmers during meets. Versus Cape Coral High School meet per FHSIA rules, our pool is too shallow to allow our swimmers to dive off the block, and can only dive from three of the six starting blocks that we have. Our swimmers are forced to start from in the water, as shown in the picture. It makes it impossible for them to have best-time swims. Board number four is locker room and restroom facilities. Centennial Park has air-conditioned locker room facilities, that is for athletes only for use. The athlete locker room facility contains ample changing space, showers, and restrooms. They also have suit dryers. The athlete locker room facility contains ample changing space. The recreation center has air-conditioned restroom facilities for spectators and coaches. Our facility only has one restroom that has to be shared between athletes, coaches, and families, et cetera. There's no area for athletes to get changed before or after practice. Board number five, additional facilities at Centennial Park. Community Recreation Center Building contains two multipurpose rooms to host meetings and events. There's a playground adjoining Recreation Center Building. Indoor fitness center featuring cardio equipment, an indoor gymnasium with six basketball courts lined for four pickleball courts and two volleyball courts.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And thank you, young lady, for showing the pictures to us.
Hi, my name is Kristen Teddums. I've been a resident of Cape Coral for almost seven years now, after moving from northwest Indiana with my husband and my two children. That was one of them. I am a health and PE teacher at Cape Coral High School, as well as one of the head coaches of the Cape Coral High School swim team. In addition to coaching the Seahawks, I am a volunteer swim coach for the Cape Aquatics Swim Club. The sport of swimming has been near and dear to my heart for a majority of my life, as I started swimming at age seven, and swam all the way through college at the University of Indianapolis, where I had both All-American accomplishments in the classroom and in the pool. Not only does my life revolve around being poolside as a coach, but both of my children are extremely talented swimmers at ages eleven and fourteen, both being ranked in the top ten in the state many times throughout their time in Florida. Also, my husband, who was somebody who trained for the Olympic team back about fifteen years ago, has recently started swimming again as a master swimmer. If you can't tell, our family lives and breathes swimming, and our love of the sport is the foundation of why I am reaching out to you. I know many people simply don't know what the sport of swimming entails, as Coach Ed kind of alluded to. So they sometimes dismiss it, and think it's just about having fun, splashing around in the pool, because so many people have pools in their backyard, but it is truly so much more. There are two seasons in swimming, fall and spring make up short-course season, where swimmers compete in pools that are twenty-five yards, whereas the summer season is long-course season, in which swimmers compete in fifty-meter pools, also what you would see the Olympians on the world stage competing at. So to put in perspective, what our swimmers train in each day around the pools in Cape Coral, a twenty-five yard pool, to prepare for a summer meet, is like a football player training on a fifty-yard field, and then playing the game on the typical hundred-yard field. Or a baseball player only having first and second bases to run to in practice, and then when it's game day, they add in the third base. Or basketball players only practicing half-court all of their time at their practice, and then add, basically, let's go full-court for the game. It's hard to be physically prepared to compete when you're really comparing apples to oranges. Swimmers cannot live up to their maximum potential, because their bodies cannot acclimate to a two- to three-day meet when they go to a long-course pool. After hundreds of hours of training in a short-course pool, our swimmers are at a distinct disadvantage in this area when it comes to their facilities they have for training in comparison to others in Florida. As a coach, I can physically watch our swimmers struggle at these long-course meets during the summer months due to lack of training versus some of their competitors who have the facilities at their disposal. It doesn't matter if the swimmer is six or fifteen, these swimmers look as though they hit a wall in their races, because their bodies do not have the same endurance and training advantages, long-course training up to seven days a week, all year round if they choose to, which many of the other teams in Florida do. I've traveled across the state of Florida for swim meets, and some of the aquatic centers and other places, and what they've invested in for their swimming community are absolutely incredible. This is why I truly hope you can see the need for such a facility here in our beautiful city, that its growth is currently booming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Diane Kimble, and I too am a coach with Swim Florida. I also coach at Cape Coral High School with Coach Teddums, and I work with Coach Ed at Cape Aquatics. And I wanted to give you a little bit perspective about the high school aspect of a facility and what it could bring. In the years, in recent years, we've really had to turn away kids from our program, and we all know that in a community that we can't serve our teenagers, and we don't have things for them to do, idle hands will find things to do, and they're not always the things we want them to find. So we want to provide them an opportunity to join a program with kids, that give them a lifelong fitness opportunity, a lifelong opportunity to make friends, something to do while they're in high school, possibly scholarship opportunities. So many of our athletes have gone on from Cape Coral High School to, and from Cape Aquatics, to college scholarships, my own son included, who was here probably about thirteen years ago, pleading the same case that these guys are pleading today. We came, like I said, about thirteen years ago, when my son was eleven, he's now twenty-four, and nothing has changed. We haven't provided anything new for these children to do in the aquatic arena, in terms of giving them something that they can come to, something they can love. And Ms. Karen alluded in the beginning that this could be a revenue opportunity for the City of Cape Coral. As a high school coach, as a mom who's traveled with a son who's ranked, has been ranked in the top ten in the nation, has gone to junior nationals, and has swum at the facilities Coach Ed mentioned, and now we have swimmers coming up behind him, going to those same facilities, I can tell you, the revenue that I spend alone as a mom, you know, because swimmers eat, let me just tell you, if you've never been around a swimmer, they eat food all the, a lot. And we have to go spend money in hotels, and we, the meets that we go to cost money, and we go and we spend several days there. And we can bring money into our city. For Cape Coral High School, we're going to, we go to districts, we have to travel, we spend our money down at FGCU, in Fort Myers and Nesterro, not in Cape Coral. When we go to regionals, we go to Stewart, or we go to St. Pete, or we go somewhere else, where we're spending our money. This is money that we could bring into our city, and provide for our people, and provide for our high schoolers and our kids, so that we don't, we have that for us. We spend a tremendous amount of money, and I think it's really worth forming that task force, so that we can look into this and really take care of our people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Lori Musciana. My family and I moved to the City of Cape Coral in 2020. We are part of the group of people who moved here, making this city one of the fastest-growing cities in Florida. Cape Coral is labeled as a water wonderland, however, it is disappointing to find out that there was no adequate competitive swimming pool for our community. There isn't even a competition pool owned by the City of Cape Coral. Once we bought a house in Cape Coral, we contacted Swim Florida to transfer to their team from South Carolina. When we arrived at the Cape Coral High School Pool to be evaluated by Coach Kristen from Swim Florida, I'm sure my facial expression showed that I was in shock of the current facility. It was much, much smaller than what we're used to. We only swam in fifty-meter pools before, and it's extremely dated. What I presume to be a shed with bars on it is actually our head coach's office and storage area all in one. This did not give a good impression for a new Cape Coral resident, especially a family that has children who swim competitively and will be swimming for a high school in Cape Coral in the future. I moved from Charleston, South Carolina, which is also one of the fastest-growing metropolitan areas in the South. My children swam in a new state-of-the-art aquatic facility with their previous competition, excuse me, competitive swim team. We had people from all over the state in South Carolina come to Nor Charleston just to swim at meets. Before they swam at the new aquatic center, my kids swam in an older pool in Nor Charleston. We've been a part of competitive swimming for a while now. That old pool in Nor Charleston was better than the Cape Coral High School pool, and I wouldn't say that about many pools. I will say that South Carolina did plan according to the growth and the future potential growth of the city in respects to aquatics. Nor Charleston is a city of one hundred and twenty-two thousand people. We have four, they have four pools for their community. A couple of years ago, they built a brand-new state-of-the-art aquatic center. This new aquatic center is used for the competent, the competitive swim team, some of the high schools, masters, the lap swimmers, triathletes, and families. Most cities, especially booming cities, have multiple competition pools for their community. Cape Coral is the city with estimated two hundred and four thousand people online, which Karen had mentioned. There's a Cape Coral Master Plan for Parks and Recreation. It says that the goal is four swimming pools per one hundred and seventy-five thousand people. Cape Coral has one pool for leisure purposes, and is lacking three more pools. The City of Cape Coral's end goal is eight pools per the four hundred thousand people. The City of Cape Coral needs to step up and address the aquatic needs of their community. We are asking for one competitive fifty-meter pool, and there should be four pools with the current Cape Coral population. Is that my beep?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hayden Teddums. I'm a competitive swimmer at Cape Aquatics Swim Club. I've competed at the Florida Age Group Championships, and placed top ten in the state in multiple events. My best accomplishment in my swimming career has been to place fourth in the country in the eight-hundred-meter freestyle for my age group.
Hi, my name is Sophie Pellegrino. I'm also a competitive swimmer at the Cape Coral Aquatics Swim Club. I have qualified and competed in the Florida State Championships for high school age group swimmers, as well as the Southern Zone Sectional Swim Meet, where swimmers from eleven states all over the country have competed at.
This season, we both have participated in multiple fifty-meter course swim meets, which is double the length of the pool that we practice at. Competing at our level, this has caused a big disadvantage between us and our competitors. While our competitors are given the opportunity to not only practice in a fifty-meter pool, but many have enough pool time available to train morning and afternoon.
Because of this, we are at a disadvantage not only in extra training, but also in how we prepare for our swim events. For example, when training in a short-course pool, trying to perfect your flip turns is irrelevant when competing in a fifty-meter long-course meet, because the distance from the flags to the wall is different in a twenty-five yard to fifty-meter pool. So the best we can actually get in, as far as practicing turns and other skills, is the forty-five minutes during our warm-ups the day of the meet.
It's challenging to chase our dreams of someday hoping to swim at an international level meet, when we are at a distinct disadvantage this early in our swimming career. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gianna Johns, and I'm twelve years old. I swim at Cape Aquatics, and I'm a part of the Swim Florida Competitive Team. I have been swimming competitively for almost seven years, but it was only until two years ago that I really decided to push myself and be who I am today. I have competed in multiple long-course meets since April of 2019, but I realized that this year, long-course swimming is what I excel best in, especially in distance events. Having a fifty-meter pool would really benefit my teammates and I to prepare for meets properly and improve our times. The pool that we practice in only has six lanes, and the blocks are super wobbly, which is not safe for us swimmers, and it prevents us from getting our start times accurate. The six lanes that we use for practice are usually crowded, and it is hard for us to practice without getting passed by and run over. The lanes that we swim in are also very shallow, making it more likely for us to get hurt. Right now, we have approximately seventy swimmers on our team that range from ages six to eighteen. There will be an even bigger issue with lane crowding when more swimmers register to join our team. Another thing I would like to bring to your attention is the economic impact that our City of Cape Coral would make if we invest in this pool. Every meet that could be held at this pool could bring us so much revenue from people all over the state coming to visit and compete at this pool, including them eating at our restaurants, staying at our hotels, doing activities, and so much more. Thank you so much for your time, and on behalf of everybody here, we would really appreciate if you would consider what we have put all of our time and effort into, and all of these amazing people coming to talk to you today about the future of Cape Coral and it having a fifty-meter pool.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is- My name is Valerie Pellegrino and I've been a Cape Coral resident since 2004 and my two youngest children are part of the swim program that we're talking about today. I'm going to speak to you about the impact this amazing sport has had on their lives. When our youngest son first joined this swim club in 2010, he was struggling academically. We did some research and we learned that swimming might help. Initially, he was hesitant, but at the end of the first week with the club, something in him changed. He practiced three days a week through that first summer and he loved every minute of it. I never had to remind him that it was time to go to practice, he reminded me. When the school year started up again, I noticed his academics were improving dramatically. Swim has impacted every aspect of his life. Within a year of starting this program, he moved up to the gold group, the fastest swimmers in the club, and he soon achieved numerous state championship times. As the years went by, we watched our son, who we thought might never graduate high school, let alone go to college, achieve state and national times in swimming and receive an appointment to a federal academy where he is currently a midshipman finishing his third year. My youngest daughter, who is now in high school, is also excelling at swim and it has truly changed her life. And these stories are not the only ones. I've observed kids from all sorts of backgrounds thrive in this program, utilizing the skills and the discipline from daily year-round practice to move on to bright, successful futures. In the last two years alone, two alumni swimmers from this program received commissions in the Navy and the Air Force. And these kids achieve all this despite the fact that Cape Coral has totally inadequate training facilities. As outstanding as this program is, we can't expand it. The old tiny pool at Cape Coral High School is the only lap pool in the entire city and we can't accommodate many more swimmers. Over the years, many of our fastest swimmers leave Cape Coral and they go to Fort Myers or FGCU because the facilities are better and they have more opportunities for training. It's not that we don't have enough coaches, we don't have enough pool. The pool is on high school property, so it severely limits the opportunities for practice. In fact, many of our swimmers will go to other pools this summer like Port Charlotte, some even go to the Wellness Center just to be able to get more swim time in the pool. And building a 25-yard pool off Trafalgar next to the BMX part is a waste. It will serve the needs of only one swim club that is currently, doesn't even practice in Cape Coral while ignoring the needs of five high schools and the only swim club in Cape Coral that has been successfully operating for over 25 years. A 50-meter pool and rec center will serve this entire community, all the high schools and the local swim clubs and masters programs and more. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Quay. I am an educator at Cape Coral High School. As a matter of fact, tomorrow is my last day as an educator at Cape Coral High School. I am officially retiring. I have just gotten into the swim family in the last year with my grandson that has started to swim. So I'm not really here talking about the swim part of it. What I can talk to you about is the education part of it. I can tell you it changes children completely and 100%. I had that son, I had that young man in my class that academically excelled. I've had children that academically excelled. I've had Coach T's swimmers in my class. It changes children. It's the same type of thing when any sport that they get involved in, whether or not it's basketball, football, whatever it is, we need a recreational facility for all of our children to participate in. We make sure that we have the football fields, we make sure we have those awesome basketball courts, we make sure that we have these other facilities, but we have dropped the ball, ladies and gentlemen, in the swimmers. We've got to step it up so that these kids, because guess what? This is our future right here in the city of Cape Coral. And everything that they have spoken about today, the revenue that can come into this city is overwhelming. I've seen it in the other areas that we go to the swim meets. I'm now one of those people giving that revenue to those other people as a grandma. So I hope you will take this strong into consideration and if you have any more information you'd like, like I said, I'm retiring tomorrow, I'll be glad to help out in any way I can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Grace Smith and this past year I was senior co-captain with Cape Coral Rowing Club's youth crew. I wanted to start by saying thank you to Mr. Mayor and all the council members for placing our ordinance back on the agenda, we do really appreciate it. So I don't know about all of you, but I don't get up before the sun on a Saturday morning for something that's not important to me. But every Saturday morning, I have gotten up and rowed until I'm sick. So I think that that just kind of shows you how important the rowing club is to all of us. We are the only youth rowing club in the area, we have kids come from Naples and all over Lee County to come row with us because I believe that the next closest rowing club is in Sarasota. I just, as I said, I'm a senior, I am a graduated senior now, so I obviously have no further obligation to the rowing club. I have graduated and I'm done, but I did come back here to speak to all of you because I just believe that it's so important and I wanted to let you all know that we really appreciate you placing our item back on the agenda and we look forward to our new location and thank you all.
Thank you.
First off, before I begin, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and all the councilmen. My name is Zoe Vodas and I'm 16-years-old, I'm a rising junior and I row for Cape Coral Youth Crew. I wanted to say thank you for amending the agenda to include our ordinance 5122. I believe I speak on behalf of all of my peers when I say this club is of great importance to us and has brought a sense of community to us. We want to represent our community that many of us have been born in and have grown up in and have been raised here in. We've put Cape Coral on the map in our regional, state and national competitions and by having this ordinance back onto the agenda, we will be able to have our fall season again. Our fall season is very important to us for preparing for our competitions and for many of our juniors and seniors applying to college. Many of us would like to continue our passion and love for rowing in college and by having this ordinance back on the agenda, we are able to do that and continue to like push ourselves to be better so that way when we are ready to apply to college and ready to contact coaches, we are well-prepared. We're not asking for money or anything, we just want support and access to our waterways. And we want to be able to put Cape Coral on the map and represent the city that we grew up in and that we want to row for instead of having to go to Sarasota where if we went to college and we didn't have this ordinance, we would have to say that we rowed for Sarasota and not the city that we grew up in and that we all love. I want to say thank you so much for your time and putting us back on the agenda.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chalan Lowe, a high school crew member of Cape Coral Rowing Club. Thank you, Mayor and Chair, for your time. The city of Cape Coral has the most extensive canal system in Florida with over 400 miles of canals. With that being said, with the amount of available water we have, we must utilize it. My crew and I compete regatas against teams from all over, including Illinois, Michigan, the Carolinas and Tennessee, all of which have access to water. We must embrace that we have an abundance of water here in Florida. From someone who has been a part of the crew for a little under a year, I can say that we have improved tremendously from the beginning of the season and we have all created a close bond with one another. I would like to recognize that my team and I worked really hard this season to put ourselves out there, earning first place in Girls' Varsity State Swimming Championship, the freshman boys 4+ winning first place in the state swimming championship and the girls' double winning first for state championship. Rowing is a year-round sport that people can pick up at any age. I think that's something that is so special about the sport. Implementing the club to the community is beneficial to everyone, not just youth athletes. The club is a great source of attraction for Cape Coral as well. As a high school student interested in continuing the sport through college, rowing, rowing is seen not only as a recreational event, but as an opportunity to earn a scholarship. Rowing is equivalent to football or any other sport that it, and for that matter, it deserves more recognition. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Chair and Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Charcon. I'm 15-years-old and a resident of Cape Coral and a member of Cape Coral Rowing Club. I'm kindly asking for your help. We're the only rowing club between Naples and Sarasota and the only one offering a competitive youth program between Sarasota and Miami. And as such, we actually have members from Naples join us weekly to train. We are a nonprofit organization that was explicitly mentioned in Parks, Go-Bahn Development for the Tropicana Park. I didn't know, or I don't know what images you may conjure before an increasing number of people, rowing is finally becoming more accessible. It has been a summer Olympic sport since 1990, 1900, my bad, in Paris, France, however the popularity of the sport has grown tremendously in the past few years, mainly thanks to the rise of rowing machine-only studios and gym classes with rooms full of indoor rowers. And like other Olympic sports, rowing will see an increase of participation as the Olympics come to the United States in 2028. Rowing is a full-body workout, it can be as high-intensity as you want it to be, but it is low-impact, which is great for all ages. Rowing is a clean-water sport and so rowers have several reasons to be part of the clean-water movement. As a sports federation, World Rowing believes that we all have a responsibility to apply environmentally sustainable practices in the use and management of water. With this partnership, the rowing club plans to grow its youth activities for middle and high school-aged kids to learn and grow in the discipline of rowing and paddle sports using the park's water access. We offer rowing to military veterans and our other goals are to support underserved and/or disadvantaged youth and adaptive impaired athletes as opportunities develop. As the city is growing, our club is looking to attract college and club rowing programs from around the country to come train in Cape Coral and would like to further work together to grow a permanent boathouse and expand the park's facilities. With visiting rowers, clubs, support staff and family members spending their money at area hotels, shops, gas stations and restaurants, it ultimately boosts the economy. With more than 400 miles of canals in the city, we are asking to share less than 1%. I'm not asking for taxpayer funding, I'm simply asking for temporary access until Tropicana Park is constructed. I'm confident everyone can agree that granting access for youth is more important than pleasing special interests. And for those that may have doubts, we have peacefully coexisted in Cape Harbor since 2007. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I am Cole Calden. I am a rising senior at Cypress Lake High School and I'd like to thank you guys once again. I'm sure it's sounding redundant at this point from all of us thanking you, but we all really appreciate you reintroducing the ordinance. Personally, it's very impactful for me because I'm a senior this next year, it's going to be my last year rowing. I'm sure some of you were either high school or collegiate athletes at some point, so you all know how detrimental it can be to lose practice time and how much of a disadvantage it can put you at. So I thank you for allowing us this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am Sandra Weston, I reside in the Southwest Cape. I'm starting to feel like a rising senior now that all my kids have been up here, but not the kind they were talking about. I'm currently the president of the club and I am the youth crew coach. I've sent you guys tons and tons of words this week, right? The one thing I didn't mention that is somewhat germane is that back in December and January, I did approach staff because I just knew, I just knew 2022, it was going to be it. This is when the shoe's going to drop, this is when we're going to get the eviction notice. I really wanted a continuity of operations plan because I'm that person with the 15-tab spreadsheet, I'm a process engineer and I wanted a plan. I wanted a continuity of operations plan that had everything beautifully spelled out that said, here's where you're going to go when you get that letter, here's what's going to happen, it's all going to be wonderful. And of course, you know how it works, right? Everybody's so busy, they can't see straight and that didn't happen. And then the letter came and it was a scramble, okay? So I have two things to say. One is, I'm sorry, I had no idea what I was doing, right? And so I approached those same people that I had approached earlier, six months ago. And of course, I was a bit frantic, right? 30 days to do about three months' worth of work and oh, by the way, where will we land? And as a public servant, like all of you, this is my tunnel vision, all of these people, because as the president, I serve them, as the coach, I serve them, okay? So I'm sorry that I didn't do things the way I probably should have done, okay? A second thing I want to say is thank you. Thank you for, in spite of my communication failings or shortcomings, my lack of knowledge, my ignorance, whatever the case may be, thank you. Thank you for at least reinstating us to the agenda and being willing to meet us in the middle and work with us and partner with us. We appreciate it, I can't ask for more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, old age and all. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for the time to speak. My name is Luke Vodas. This is Pamela Vodas. You may recognize us, we've probably sent you quite a bit of email and phone calls in the last few days regarding ordinance 5122. We are business owners in the Cape, specifically the Southeast Cape in District 1 for Council Member Tate. We've been there for 15 years. We come before you today, more importantly than business owners, as parents. You just saw our daughter Zoe speak to you. It's her first year rowing and for some of these kids, it was their first months of rowing. We had the opportunity to witness that Nathan Benderson Park in two different state championships. Our teams take first place in a variety of finals in a variety of boats. And these are kids that are going from nothing to everything, competing against teams in Sarasota that have rowed together for five, six, even eight years through middle school and high school. Zoe's boat was piloted by Zoe and another crew member, Evie. She's in eighth grade, Zoe was in 10th grade. They competed against 11th graders and smoked them on the water. And it's because of the club, it's because you allow access to the water and that's what they seek. The only single thing that they seek is access to water. They don't want money, they don't want adulation, they want to row. And they do row and when they row in local, regional, state and national competitions, they wear Cape Coral on their chests. So I do thank you for putting us back on the agenda. I do thank you for understanding the needs not only of the club, but of these children that are here before you today, because when they speak, they speak from the heart. They've enjoyed what they've done, they love being in the Cape. And I thank you, I know Pamela thanks you for the opportunity to speak. Again, we cannot express how happy we are to see the ordinance back on the agenda. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, thank you. My name is James Case, reside in the Cape. I've been here since 2007. I want to thank the council for putting the ordinance back on the June 15th agenda and thank you for acknowledging the concerns of the rowing club. It's a nonprofit program and it's spearheaded by dedicated volunteer coaches, as you've seen, and parents, as you've seen as well. The program's comprised of residents in the masters program and students from middle school through high school in a scholastic program. My daughter was the eighth grader that was just mentioned. In addition, students from Fort Myers, even as far away as Naples, come here to row with the Cape. The program's come a long way in the last few years. We've had several boats rank in the top 20 in the state championships for scholastic rowing this year, very exciting to see. Two students received college scholarships for rowing. Other scholastic rowing teams know who we are now, they know we're a force and that wasn't the case just a short time ago. Even though we only have a small number of rowers compared to some other clubs and a very limited budget, we have become very competitive. It's a very strong growing program and with your help, it will only get stronger. Florida's the most competitive state for rowing. All colleges look here first for future collegiate rowers. We need to make sure that Cape Coral stays a part of that and with your help, we will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Fry. I sent a couple of emails to you people today and last night. I'm a retired disabled veteran and I want to, I'm here to express my, I'm against where the rowing club is going to have their temporary facility. However, I don't, I'm not opposed to the rowing club getting, you know, a facility. The most important thing for me is to maintain the nice area The most important thing for me is to maintain the nice area and keep the Seven Islands project as long as it stays in its natural state as clean as possible. You know, a lot of us up there endured the utilities extension project where we lived for several years with all sorts of debris, but that's over and done with. And if the project goes through for the Seven Islands, maybe it'll be a better place. But more importantly, what I hear from these people, the rowing club and what they're doing for youth and the swimming club, you know, let's focus on the youth and the future of this town. Doesn't matter if you're gonna create another Cape Harbor. This is the future of this organization, this town, and in my opinion, these things should be first on your list. Yeah, I'd like to have a nice quiet where me and my buddy Noah can hang out, but at the end of the day, these are the future of Cape Coral. They're gonna be sitting in your chairs one day. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Natalie Kiznicki, and I'm gonna totally agree with what the gentleman just in front of me said about the youth. I'm a teacher. I teach fifth grade. I'm gonna teach, I've taught first grade. I don't like talking in public, though. I can talk, and if you were kids, I would be great, but you're adults, so. But the reason I wanted to come up here is honestly, we talk about the competitiveness and the swim, same thing with the swimming, whether it's swimming or rowing, how competitive they are in the scholarships. As a teacher, as a parent, quite frankly, that part doesn't matter. These kids have a place they belong. People that love them, people that make them feel needed. You see the stuff that's news, and it's horrifying, and these kids have something that makes them feel good about themselves, that gives them a family. It's not even about the sport. It's about can they be together on the water and row? Can they be in a pool and swim? And like I said, the gentleman had it perfectly. I think whether it's a pool or a boat, just please help them, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, the city, city council members. My name is Dean Jewell. I live in Southwest 128th. Yeah, I'm sorry. My name's Dean Jewell. I live at Southwest 128 15th Place in Cape Coral, Florida, and I'm here to ask your approval for your helping getting approved ordinance 3922. When we get these ordinance resolutions, solutions, I hope I'm speaking at the right time. I'm gonna keep it real short, and I wish good luck to the swim teams and the rowing teams. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input?
Good afternoon. I'm Frances Peretta, and I've been living in Cape Coral for about fifteen years, and I want to tell you that I support the change for our street from commercial to residential. I appreciate if you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak during public input? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. I will open up the discussion with council for citizens' input. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to say thank you so much to all of you who came out. I was a college rower back in the University of Texas when it was just a club sport, and I swam when I was in elementary school. Wasn't really good at swimming because you have to keep your face down and you can't talk. I was really good at rowing because you could yell, right? I was a portside rower for seat four in an eight and a stroke portside rower in a, no, sorry, in an eight, yes. And then I stroked a four, so that might sound weird. But in any case, I think everybody up here, as I mentioned before, and I'm really grateful that the mayor put this, brought this back up to put on the agenda, because I don't think there's anybody up here that doesn't support any of our youth. I mean, we just went through an intensive strategic planning session with the Urban Land Institute, and all we heard was, we need more, we need more, we need more green space, we need more things for our youth to do. God, I hear it from my sixteen-year-old all the time, there's nothing for me to do. So I agree. I think that, you know, we're getting ready to budget. We have budget coming up, so in terms of building an Olympic-sized facility, I know that's something that we'll talk about, and of course, you know, the key thing is how will we pay for it, you know, because nobody here, up here, is a fan of raising taxes. So we'll have to come up with some creative ways to do some of the things that are on our strategic plan. So I just wanted to say thank you for coming, and again, you know, thank you to the rowers who came, and I promise you, you know, all of us here are listening, and we all received your emails, and unfortunately, I couldn't read them all, having a vision issue, but I just wanted to say thank you all for coming, and we're listening. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. I'd like to go down the list just a little bit, and Mike, I don't need a report at this moment, but within the next few days, I would really like to know what happened with the public boat ramps, because I remember that we spoke to you that night, and we asked someone to take care of that or at least help them get their boats out of the water. So if you would, please report back to me and tell me what happened there, so I know. Mr. Bishaw, that was a good report. I think he already left, but I appreciate the Northwest Homeowners Association always helping us to become better people. As to the swim club, Kristin, we've talked before, Jennifer was a rower, I was a swimmer, so I think you've got us covered. I don't know about the guys, but you've got us covered. And I support you a hundred percent. If I could dig a pool tomorrow and build it for you, I would, because yes, I grew up here and did it in Norfolk Myers High School, so I know how important it is. And to the educator that's retiring, congratulations, and thank you for all of your years of service to the education of our community. And yes, it does change people, and we saw that as somebody was so emotional tonight talking about students and keeping them out of trouble, and there's nothing better than sports. It creates a family, whether it's swimming, rowing, whatever it is. So I don't know how we're gonna do it, but as far as I am committed to helping you build a pool and figure it out quicker than later, because it's gonna take a couple of years anyway, so hopefully the mayor will allow us to form a task force like you all asked and get a group of citizens together, and maybe we form a nonprofit and we fundraise, however we do it, but I think you would probably have a commitment from us to do it. With the rowing club, I wanna thank you all for your emails. Mr. Veda, you were a little tough on me, I've got to say, but it did work out, and I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to work on this. As I stated when you called me and said you'd give us twenty-four hours to take care of it, it took us a little longer than twenty-four hours, but cooler heads always prevail. And we work as a team up here, although we can't talk about an issue, I think we all understood that it was important to get the rowing club the help that they needed at this time. And so I appreciate everybody up here working together, although none of us have talked about it, but I think we're pretty much on the same page. So it's very great that the mayor brought that forward, and I know that we read all of your emails, so it was very much appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna also take this in pieces as well, because there was a lot of input today. First, I wanna start with the swim club. I was a member of Swim Florida back, I believe, in the mid-nineties, where I swam at that Cape Coral High School pool, and it's a twenty-five-yard pool. And it probably hasn't changed much, other than getting resurfaced. I know the facility, I know the bathroom, but it's tiny. You can't even put anything there. So yes, I do believe that we are in need of something here in Cape Coral. And Kristin, you had mentioned facility that's proposed, that has not been brought forward officially to council yet, but I'd like to talk to you about that, because I've got some information. I believe we're gonna be talking about it soon. But I'm glad you brought that up, because that proposed facility is only gonna be a twenty-five pool as well, and it's not gonna be enough. So it's something that, I grew up in Florida, I grew up swimming. I swam the canals, if you believe it, back in the nineties. I've, you know, swam in Lake Kennedy, I swam all around. Now, I don't think anyone would wanna do that. It's changed quite a bit since back then, but please reach out to me, and Mrs. Quay and Ms. Kimble will know how to get ahold of me. So I'd be willing to help maybe take this further with you guys, too, maybe. I don't believe that the school board is gonna be putting any new pools in anytime soon, from what I've heard from other teachers and other athletic directors in the community. So it is gonna have to come from another source, and it might, maybe we can talk to county commissioners about it and see what they can do to, you know. Obviously, we saw what Pickleplex did in Port Charlotte, and it drew attention to people here, to where we're looking at adding courts, pickleball courts to host tournaments. I think we need to look at pools as well, because back when I swam, there was only less than seventy-five thousand residents in Cape Coral, and now we're at two-hundred-thousand-plus, and the pool situation has not changed. So I do feel for you there. As far as the rowing club, this came on very fast and very quick, and I got a lot of emails this week, and I've learned quite a bit about what was going on and what was needed. So I'm gonna take next week, and I'm gonna do some more investigation. I understand that you've worked with city staff on finding a location and working with this and that. I believe there is a location within Cape. I threw a few ideas out at my manager's meeting, and apparently, this has all been worked through and everything's been done, so I've got some questions I wanna deal with staff on and educate myself more. I'm not against rowing. I don't wanna say that, but there are some policies in place, and there are some areas that we're looking at, and this is a quick change. And I don't wanna get us backed into a corner with another situation later down the road where we don't have everything figured out and explained perfectly here, because if we allow something for one person, then we're gonna have to, down the line, allow it for four, or five, six, or seven other things. And I understand the situation you guys have is unique, and I just wanna make sure that before I vote on anything, that I am fully knowledgeable about the situation. So I'm glad I came back on the agenda today. It was part of my nay vote on the agenda. I would've, I understand you're in a bind, but I like to be educated. So I'm gonna take the time this week and next week to make sure that when this comes for public hearing, that I'm fully informed. And with that, thank you all for coming out. It would've been nice to have you kinda split on two weeks, but I think it makes a lot of sense today to have you all here, because it shows the needs that we have in the community. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, I actually am gonna call Mike Ilchism up to discuss the Northwest boat ramp, the residence that they had brought up from a week or two ago. I thought that we had a pretty decent understanding in the short term of how we wanted it to be approached, so I just wanna see where we're at with that and the communication from those citizens who apparently have stated that that's not the case.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mike Ilchism, Public Works Director. So at the, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about how we were gonna proceed. If you recall, Councilmember Long had asked if he could get support to work on some type of response for this, and then the city manager had asked, let us get staff, let administration get kinda the information and where we wanna go ready, so that we could then meet with Councilmember Long to present a path forward. So with that, what we've done since then is we've communicated with our risk management division to look at if there's any additional risk profile from opening these up to be public access. We've worked with the city attorney's office on whether or not there is a legal requirement to provide access. The last thing that we are working on, I spoke with the development services director, the last thing we're, are trying to resolve is if these become pocket parks, do they have to be classified as a commercial park, commercial development? That's the issue that we went through with the seven neighborhood parks and the four community parks. There is no code now that allows for pocket parks or parks, they're considered non-residential developments. And so when that permit would go through to allow that access as a boat ramp for public use, the staff in development services is going to review that as a non-residential development, and it's going to need all of the things that would be triggered in the non-residential code. So Vince's team, Vince is aware of what we're looking, where we're trying to go. He just needs some time to figure it out. So at this point, there really is no update for the residents, and as you know, we are gonna meet with the city manager once we've resolved that last piece, develop our path forward, and then meet with Councilmember Long to put together a plan forward.
Thanks, Mike. Just one follow-up on that, because I know they had mentioned that, to me personally beforehand, I'm not sure if they brought it up at the podium, but they had, I believe it was Councilmember Tate or another council member up here, that had asked if it was possible that we were able to coordinate with those individuals on a one-on-one basis to get their boats out in emergency situations or for maintenance. Is that still something that...
If there's an emergency situation, I mentioned that to them even outside. If they send me an email, I give them all my email address, and they have direct email to me saying, we need to, we need to, we have a sinking boat or a boat that, you know, motor's falling into the water. That's an environmental issue that we need to resolve, and that, those are the reasons why we have these, while we're putting them in as public access ramps, so that we have the ability to respond to an emergency, an environmental issue, or any, anything like maintenance in the canal systems. Now, whether or not we take that next step, which we're working through now to make them public access, is the, is the next, next layer in that. But I've let them know if there's something like that, they have my email address, they could send me an email, and we'll arrange for that to happen.
Okay. Last thing, I don't know if this is something that you can address or maybe the city attorney, but can you just give a little bit of context as to why we can't, as they suggest, just drop the rope and kinda turn a blind eye to the public use of those particular boat ramps that they were mentioning?
Can you restate that?
They basically wanted to know why you can't just drop the rope and let them use those facilities that you're saying are government-use-only, that as it previously existed for many years prior to us putting the ropes up and shutting out their canal use.
Yeah, so I mean, again, the idea of the rope is that right now, it's not, it is not developed to the standard that we would allow residents to go to a public park. There are certain things on the site that do not exist. So we, we spoke with the risk management division, they contacted our insurance agent. I mean, the risk profile to the ones we're building today is the same profile that exists for the ones that are already publicized, so we don't believe that it will increase the risk profile, but it will just allow more opportunity of the same risk that's out there. So like I said, right now, they're permitted as a government-use-only. We go with a site plan before, before development services. It's reviewed, it's approved, and then we construct it. So if we were to remove that, then the city would basically have permitted one thing, and now we're allowing something else, and that just wouldn't, that wouldn't look good in the face of the development industry and the construction industry, who, you know, we inspect them and we expect them to build what's on the plans.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
With regards, I'm just going down the list with regards to the swim folks. I believe it was mentioned by Councilmember Nelson that it was brought up at UOI, that there's a lack of infrastructure here for our youth. One of the items that they had identified and something that I personally have an interest in is bringing an indoor athletic facility to this area. That's something that certainly could incorporate, and I've seen other municipalities incorporate, I believe, around those areas, a pool of respectable size, which it sounds like we currently lack in the city. So that's certainly something that I would be willing to continue forward and discuss with you all, and there's been other groups that have reached out to me with different organizations in the city that have also expressed that. Again, it's a money thing, we are coming into budget season, so it's fresh on our mind, which I think is a good thing. That's something that I'm gonna continue to push for. But yeah, please feel free to reach out, and I'd be happy to engage in those conversations and see if we can find a way. With the rowing club, I'm glad we were able to find a way to get it on the agenda. Happy to see that there's gonna be some discussion, and it seems like we found a way to make it all work. So with that, I will kick it back. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
So I didn't row, and I didn't swim, but, but I covered swimming, covered swimming and rowing in my twenty-three years as a sportswriter. So I know how hard the swimmers work. I know about the five a.m. practices before school and the two or three hours in the pool after school. I understand the need, and we need to work to come up with a plan to get that financed and get an Olympic-sized pool in our area. I was thinking back, I think... I was thinking back, I think a lot of this got derailed when we had a group come in that tried to sell us on a pool that would attract the NCAA championships in the Olympic trials. And unfortunately, what they were trying to sell us, they didn't have the backing for. So, I think that disillusioned counsel a little bit, but we need to get it back on track and come up with a plan, whether it's a task force, whether it's continuing conversations with all our groups, public-private funding, whatever it might be. We need to look at that. To the rowers, I covered sports for four years in Pittsburgh, where they have high school rowing. I coached tennis there for North Catholic, where I shared a facility where I watched the rowers get in the river every day and saw how hard they worked. I think at the time, when I was Cape Coral editor, we supported the rowing and kayak facility at one of the parks, because it was important. It was important for the kids that were training. We took a lot of kayakers out of play, too, when that didn't happen. So, if we disillusion kids on their dreams, for me, that's a problem. I think we can come up with a temporary solution for you for now, until the facility is built, as I said before. And I just, I just don't think it comes down to if we do it one, we do it for everybody else. I just don't think it works that way. I think you look at the situation, you look at the need and the want, and you develop a plan, if you can, and make it happen. And, you know, I think for both groups, hopefully, we can do that. But, the teamwork, dedication, after seeing it, covering it for so many years, I, you know, I, for one, have had a front-row seat and know how important it all is. So, thank you all. Thank you all for coming tonight, and hopefully, we'll get resolution on both of these. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yeah, I want to talk about the boat ramps first. This really bothers me, because, you know, we have boat ramps for saltwater access, and over the years, I've been here since ninety-six, and some of them boat ramps have been in very poor condition, and we never put a chain across them and told all our boaters that use saltwater that, "Oh, you're not allowed to use this until we figure out the problem." As far as I know, there was never a sign at any of these ramps that said it was for city use only and not for the citizens that live on that waterway. So, I think the chain should come down immediately, and then we work on what we're going to do to resolve the problem. But, to create this hardship for the people that have been living a certain way on this waterway for years, and then all of a sudden be told, "Oh, you're not allowed to use this anymore until we figure things out." I mean, people made big investments, they bought boats, they put docks up, they paid for permits, they're paying more taxes, living on that water added value to our city. I'm about building the magnet of our city, not tearing it down. And I don't, I understand the problem that we have, but I think we're going about it the wrong way. I think the chain should be down, signs erected that the ramps are for use of the people that live on that waterway only until further notice. And then we work on what we have to work on to improve them. But, to simply just close them, we're creating a hardship for these citizens, and it's not right. I'm sorry. I thought it was going to be handled differently when it was brought up last time, but I foresee this being dragged out for a long period of time, and I don't think it's right for the people that live on these waterways. If you have a boat and you live on a saltwater canal, just think if all of a sudden your access to pull your boat out of the saltwater canal was taken away till further notice. I mean, this, it's unacceptable to me. So, I'm going to talk to our city manager about removing the chains immediately. As far as swimming and the rowing, I'm all about building the magnet of our city, to bring investment here. The stronger our magnet is, our financial demographic rises up and brings us the ones in needs that we want here. We have sports that are extremely successful in our city. Why? Because we had availability for them, particular sports. I have six children, and almost all of them played soccer, and half of them didn't really have any dreams of playing soccer, but they played soccer, because it was so big in our city, because there were so many fields and teams and access. But, it's almost embarrassing that we're a city in Florida, we're the water wonderland, but yet we don't have a pool, you know, big enough for competitiveness. It's almost embarrassing. And I've seen it kicked down the road over the years, even as a citizen sitting there, like you guys, over the years, it brought up and fade away, and brought up and fade away. And I think this is as important as when we voted to invest in our charter schools. Our charter schools are a magnet for our city. People move here because they want better education for their children. People will move here if we have this facility built for these people. It's going to become a magnet. It's going to bring more people here that have interest in that, and that's going to raise the value of the city, and we're going to see a return on that investment. I don't know how it happened, because I wasn't on council at the time, but we're redoing all these parks, and how all these parks are being redone, and the plans are already finished, and none of them have an Olympic pool. I don't know how that happened. But, we have to embrace these two organizations. This, these, the swimming and the rowing are very important to our city. They're an asset, and, you know, once again, it's true. What, you know, I have many children, as I already said, and I have a lot of family that have children here. There's not a lot of activities for our children to do. Like I said, a lot of them play soccer, only because we have so many soccer fields, and there's so many soccer teams. But, we need more choices for our kids, because they all have different talents, and we have to invest in them talents, and by investing in them talents, it brings value to our city. So, I don't want this to go away. I want the people that are involved in the swimming to contact me and educate me, and I'm going to make it a mission of mine to do what I can to figure out how we can accomplish this goal, because when I ran for this office, I was about building the magnet of our city. And your group is part of that magnet, and we have to build on that, because that's going to add value to our city. And you are important, and so I want to work with you, and please contact me, and I know that our fellow, my fellow council members are just as passionate as me. We all want our city to improve, but there are hurdles, and it's money. Nobody wants to hear their taxes are going up. But, you know what? If we work together as a community and get other nonprofits and other organizations and even businesses, and we all pull together, we can figure it out. So, I think we're going to set a mission here, and we're going to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep this brief, because everything I want to say has pretty much already been said. To the swim folks, I'm with you, I support you. I think we've been hearing about this for years. I've lived here all my life. I remember, I think it was maybe ten or fifteen years ago, we had that big swim center proposal that Councilmember Hayden talked about, and even then, we saw the need. And I think this is a good time for us to be talking about it, and I'm sure it'll be coming up in future discussions. And of course, for the rowing club, I'm also with you. I'm glad we were able to get it added to introductions today, and I think that this new proposal makes a lot of sense, so I think that'll be good. As far as the boat access situation, I don't think it has to do with saltwater versus freshwater canals. I've seen those chains put up around the city. But, Mike, I do suggest that you reach out to those residents, because they said they tried contacting you, and I know you're very responsive, so I think there must be a miscommunication there. Maybe Councilmember Long can put you in communication with them. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, first off, I'll go down the list as well. Thank you to the swim club for coming out, and we can see that you're passionate, you have a mission. I think we hear you. Like Councilmember Long had mentioned, the Urban Land Institute that was just here and analyzed our cities, stated one of the elements that they felt that we needed to expand upon was youth recreational facilities here in our city. Now, I take that more broadly, because I think that the swimming aspect is only one component of that. What I would like to see here in our city is a youth recreational facility that encompasses many different sports, swimming, basketball, whatever the youth sport may be, so the youth in our community can go to one location, and they may do four or five different types of sports at that particular facility. I think that's what we are lacking in our community. I think we knew that already when Urban Land Institute came, and they did their analysis. They just confirmed pretty much what we already knew, anyway. So, I look forward to future discussions to try to provide that youth facility, and also provide some type of swimming amenities as a part of that overall youth facility. The rowing club, boy, it's been a tough weekend. You know, there's a lot of emails shot back and forth. I've always been a person that I never look backwards, I always look forward. And I knew that there was a, there was a solution there. We had to look for it, we had to work a little harder. I think we're moving in the right direction. I will say that it wasn't your fault, it was our fault. I think staff could have kept us more informed, they could have let us know that, I'll be honest with you, I don't think any of us knew you've been in discussion for the last several weeks with staff. We had no idea. So, for whatever reason, we'll get that corrected, but I think that we all here know that there's a solution. We want to find a temporary home for you until Tropicana Park gets completed. But, one thing I just want to keep, I want you to keep in mind, all of the council members here, we represent the two-hundred-thousand people who live here in Cape Coral. That's everybody, from your organization to anybody in the city. So, we have to make sure that we protect the best interest of our community overall. And I think that's why some of the discussions this last week had taken place, because we want to make sure we fill your need, but we also have to protect the residents who may be impacted because of this location. So, I think we'll be able to achieve that with no problem. One thing I will mention to this council, I had a discussion, and I'm not going to get into it tonight, with Vince Cetera. He feels that there is definitely a need for this particular property to enter into some type of temporary use agreement. And I'm going to ask Sandra, I don't see her sitting there, but I know, there she is. Make sure you reach out to Mr. Cetera, and then I know he and I have spoken today, and I know that he said that he feels that they can get all the parameters with that particular temporary use agreement worked out between now and June fifteenth. And I ask staff and our assistant city manager for the next two weeks to keep all of council apprised of any changes or any additions regarding this particular topic. So, I think we're heading in the right direction, and I think before too long, you'll be out on the water rowing. So, I know, I know we can get something accomplished. The boat ramp, as well as concerning to me, to me, we have to find, you know, unfortunately, when Mr. Ilchism come up, I didn't really hear a timeline, and that's kind of something that, you know, we may have a temporary solution, and we may have a long-term solution. I think we have to make sure that we address a short-term solution first, and then look at that long-term solution. So, I know Councilmember Long has already gotten a second to work on this issue, but I think he's given the city manager the time to do their, and staff to do their due diligence, but we want to recognize that it is impactful for the community, for the residents in that area. So, I definitely would like to see a short-term solution first, and then we can look at that long-term solution. As far as the pipe, the woman who came earlier in Citizens Input, referenced the damage to the seawall, I've been here since two thousand seventeen, I think she's been coming since then. I know that we have addressed this issue on many occasions. My question to staff is, have we sent her a formalized certified letter, making sure that we specify exactly what our position is on this matter? Because we have to make sure, I know we have recently, the last two weeks, received an email regarding this topic, but we have to make sure that this particular homeowner clearly knows what our position is on this particular topic, because coming to council like she has for the last several years really doesn't get anything accomplished.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchism, Public Works Director. We received the report, I believe, last week, contrary to what was stated, that there was nothing done in the last three months. Staff hired another inspection team who builds docks and seawalls. We were out on the property, performed an inspection. What we were looking for was to try to determine, the claims that she was making was that the seawall was installed improperly, there was an old pipe, remnant pipe in her yard, there was damage. So, we hired a company to come in and basically look at the embedment of the seawall to make sure that it was properly installed, met the city's EDS standards. They probed basically right where the pipe was to find what she, had a picture of a pipe, a remnant piece of pipe. They were unable to find that. So, a letter is going out to, the short answer is, no, the letter has not gone out yet, but the letter is going out this week. I received a draft today, just needs to be put in formal document and signed and sent.
And once you have that and sent out, if you could, please forward that to all of councils.
Will do.
All right. Thank you very much. And I think that's all the input I have at this time. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and expressing your concerns, and to me, community input is always important, because it helps us make the decisions that we need to make moving forward. With that being said, I think we'll take a ten-minute break before we get into the remainder of the agenda, so we'll come back about six-twenty-six. So we'll come back about 6:26. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is item nine, business. Nine A is consent agenda. I will now open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion. I would like to pull item eight myself. Any other items that council wants to pull?
Motion to approve the agenda without item number eight.
Second. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll and the motion?
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Sheppard? Tate?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, and item eight, which is resolution 112 dash 22, I will defer to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was apprised by staff today that the person whose name is on the plat for purposes of being the signator of the owner has passed away, and there has been someone who has been appointed to take his place. And apparently, the plat that came in to the city had crossouts in the names and another name written in. And I think it would be better form for the council to approve resolution 112 point, dash 22, the plat contingent upon us getting a clean copy of the plat indicating the current names of the signators of the owner.
Okay, is there a motion?
A move for whatever the city attorney said.
Okay, any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item nine B is appointments and boards. B1 is a budget review committee. I believe we have two vacancies and two applicants, I believe. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, we have the two vacancies, and I wanted to point out that when we advertised this, we put in the advertisement that an alternate could be selected from the applicants if, if needed. Our alternate has resigned, so it is an absolute vacancy now. So I have one member vacancy and one alternate vacancy. And the two applicants, first one is CJ Fritsch. Unfortunately, Mr. Fritsch was unable to come this evening, but he's very interested in serving. And the second applicant is Sheena Reagan. And I don't see her in the audience as well, but she has expressed an interest in serving.
Okay, I think moving forward, we, you could go down the voting order for tonight, and we will pick the voting member first, and then after that, I guess then we'll have a motion, if council desires, for the other individual alternate, alternate position.
All right. Welsh?
Yes, for the regular position, I would put Sheena Reagan, being that she tried for the position earlier, and the alternate position for Fritsch, please, thank you.
Really do them one at a time?
Yeah, we're just.
Let's do them one at a time.
I think the other one will just divert automatically, but.
So I'll pick Reagan for the primary member.
Okay.
Costin?
Reagan.
Gunter?
Reagan.
Hayden?
Reagan.
Long?
Reagan.
Nelson?
Reagan.
Tate?
Reagan.
That's seven for Reagan.
And is there a motion?
Motion to approve Reagan.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Is there a motion to approve the other individuals an alternate?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item nine C is unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for council. Any council members have any follow-up items? Okay, C and none, we'll move on to item nine D, new business. D1 is the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2021. I see Mr. Mason.
Actually, it'll be somebody else here in just a second, just getting this thing started up.
Okay.
When, when I can figure out how to make it work.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Good to see everyone again. I am Chris Kessler, Principal with CLA. I am the principal on your audit. We're here to talk about the 2021 results of the audit for the year ended September 30th, 2021. Joining me is Matt Finelli, he was the senior on the engagement, he was our boots on the ground and did a whole lot of the work and was the one that most of your staff were dealing with throughout the audit process. So just quickly, as I said, we're CLA, there's a little bit of firm overview, we are here in Fort Myers, Naples, our southwest practice. I lead our government services team here in southwest Florida. We also have 120 offices around the country, and sometimes we pull resources from those other offices as well, but for the most part, your audit team is based here in Lee County out of our Fort Myers office. So let's talk about the services performed, and I do want to say, you know, I'm appreciating the, the full agenda that you all have tonight. I'm going to be somewhat brief, this presentation was already presented to the audit committee a couple of weeks ago, so I'm going to go through really the, the main highlights here, the things that I think are really important to you all as the council. So the services that we performed, we are auditing your financial statements, so your annual comprehensive financial report. We also audit what we call the single audit, which is your federal grant compliance and your state grant compliance. So we're making sure that the dollars you're spending using the federal and state dollars are spent in the ways they're supposed to under the rules and regulations of those grants. These are all the reports that we deliver, and so these are all included within the financial statements and within the single audit package. And I'll kind of go through some of the main reports and the letters here, but the, the last one, all the way on the right on the slide, is the governance communication letter. That includes our required communications that we make to you all as governance. And I'm going to go through some of those, those, those key communications here, but if that's the letter that if there were major issues or anything that you all need to be aware of during the audit, we would include them in there. There weren't anything like that, but that's what that letter is, and that's really the one that is addressed to you all. So some of our required communications, our auditor's opinion, which, which is our opinion on your financial statements, it was unmodified, which means it's a clean opinion. That's the highest level of audit opinion that you can receive. Within the audit opinion on the single audit, which is our compliance opinion, that also was unmod, excuse me, unmodified, meaning there were no issues of non-compliance or anything along those lines. The scope in the audit, the scope and timing of the audit, it proceeded as planned, and the accounting policies of the city are in accordance with generally accepted practices and industry standards. There were no material audit adjustments, which means the numbers we were provided by city's management were unadjusted. We did not find any issues, we did not find any changes. They were accurate. Now, we had to go through and make sure that was the case, but we had no audit adjustments that would result in findings. We had no disagreements with. We had no disagreements with management, and of course, management was very cooperative, helpful, and professional during the audit process. And so we do want to say thank you to everybody with Mr. Mason's team and everybody else within all the city departments that helped get us the information that Matt and the rest of the team are asking for throughout the year. It is a lot. It is very burdensome to give us all the information that we need to get our audit done, but it was always a pleasure working with everybody on the city's team, and we appreciate all the help that we get to get our job done. So just quickly here, the 2021 events, you know, it was, it was a challenging year for local government in dealing with all the challenges that are out there outside of the normal day-to-day of operating a city of this size. So there's a significant pandemic-related funding that's coming out through ARPA, still using your coronavirus relief funds and your emergency rental assistance funds that were out there. There was a new accounting standard that the finance department had to implement. Everything went perfectly, we audited it, it was implemented very well, we had no issues with it. But given all of this that's going on, I want you all to be aware that it was a very busy year for the financial services department and what they had to deal with outside of just the regular requests. Our audit approach summary, you know, this hits on some of the things that we'll always look at as higher risk in looking at your financial statements and looking at the transactions on a year-to-year basis. Some of this doesn't change year-to-year, you know, we're looking at revenue recognition, we're looking at your payables and your construction contracts, making sure things are accounted for in the right year, as well as your compliance of your federal grants. But also with all those pandemic-related funds that I was talking about, we do have to put some extra scrutiny on those to make sure they're accounted for correctly in the financial statements. And the last bullet on here, I think this is the key thing, when we look at our overall risk assessment for the city's audit in 2021, it was looking at the findings from prior years in 2020 and making sure they were addressed or following up as to why maybe they weren't addressed, and developing our audit procedures to respond to that risk accordingly. So that's the first thing we do in any audit that we start, is we look at prior year findings or comments and go from there. And we'll talk about that here in a second on how those were addressed. So financial statement findings for 2021, there were none. We had no reported findings, nothing included in the reports, nothing that rose to a level of needing to put anything in writing. From a single audit standpoint, which is your federal and state grant compliance, again, we had a clean opinion, the unmodified opinion. And the three programs we tested, it was the coronavirus relief fund, so that pandemic-related funds that you all received and spent, as well as two state projects for the wastewater treatment facility and the Florida Shared Use Non-Motorized Trail Network program. And we had no findings in the single audit as well. So what that says is, I've got this chart here, you had no findings in 2021. And I wanted to put a little historical context in here to show you all where city management has come from 2019 to 2020 to 2021. And you know, you had one in 2019, you had six in 2020, down to zero in 2021. And you know, that is a testament to the effort that your management team and the financial services department has put in to correct those findings. I think when I was talking to you all last year, and we talk about corrective action plans being the key takeaway, that yes, findings happen and it's not ideal, but the key is, does management have a plan to put corrective action in place? And I said, yes, that was developed and we felt that we were comfortable with those plans. Well, now you can see they were enacted. You know, the first thing we do is follow up on those, as I said. And this isn't a result of us changing our procedures, this isn't a result of us taking our foot off the gas, we still look at internal controls every year, we still look at processes, we still ask the same questions to say, are you doing this again in this fiscal year? And you know, the controls and the processes were very, very strong in 2021. So you know, looking at 2020 with the system implementation and kind of what caused some of this, you all have done a very nice job in resolving those issues and moving forward to really have a clean set of financial statements and a clean set of numbers on a day-to-day and month-to-month basis. So quickly, looking at 2022, I won't get into the weeds on these new accounting standards that are coming out. Just know that your financial services team, your management team, is going to be putting in a lot of effort to implement these two standards that are coming in in '22 and '23. It is a big logistics, logistical exercise to go through and implement a new accounting standard, and these two are some of the larger ones that the Gatsby has put out in recent years. Information technology security continues to be a high-risk area for cities and governments of your size. So again, just always keeping diligence up and having focus on cybersecurity with what is happening in Europe and what is happening in the world right now, you cannot lose focus on that. And then, of course, continued focus from an audit perspective on compliance funding. These grants are going to be high-risk every year until those dollars are spent. And so from a management perspective, you all just need to make sure documentation exists for every decision you all make on how to spend those dollars and what projects that you want to use them on, make sure the documentation is there to support the reasoning and the purpose in accordance with the programs. But then as well, from an audit perspective, when either we as external auditors are coming in, or the eventual inspector generals or whoever else comes behind us years later, having that documentation in place is just going to be critical to make sure that the decisions that you're making in the moment today are still supportable four years from now, five years from now, whenever those questions get asked and those audits happen. So with that said, that's the end of my prepared comments. So again, I just want to say thank you to everybody at the city for helping us get our job done efficiently and effectively. I will tell you, I really enjoyed being here in June, having this presentation instead of where it was last year. So that's a, that's a big effort on management's side of being able to get it to this point. So we really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much. I know you and I had a conversation about a year ago, and that conversation was much different than today's presentation. So clearly, we've come a long way. And Mr. Mason, I want to thank you and your team because when you look at the presentation here, you can see a clear change in the culture in just a year. So to me, that's a direct reflection of the management team making the necessary changes. So thank you. Any other, any other comments? We appreciate you coming, giving us an update and the presentation, so thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, item nine D two is the youth council quarterly report. We moved that up into the agenda. Item nine E is personnel actions. E one is council office personnel items. Two things, one thing we have to discuss and one thing I just want to inform council as you, some of you are well aware, you've been going through a interview process with the candidates to fill the one position, open position in our office. As a result of going through the applications and going through the process, we've narrowed this particular list of individuals down to five individuals. The five individuals that got the, I guess you would say the top pick from collectively from council is Elizabeth Grosskopf, Agnes Kramick, Teresa Monroe, Lisa Williams. I know I'm going to mess up the first name here, but Milo Gross Rosario. So those were the five top candidates that will be moving forward to the next process. That particular process is that all of council can interview those candidates. I see here on these schedule that Monday, June 13th and Tuesday, June 14th, if we have eight council members interviewing five candidates, that's a total of 40 interviews. That's why we've spread it out over a two-day process. I think Connie in our office will be coordinating, setting up appointments for the 13th and the 14th will accommodate each one of us. So I just wanted to open the floor for any further discussion on that aspect, where is everything okay moving forward in the direction that we're going now. Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to make where I was planning on doing my staff report, I'm actually going to be out that week of the 15th that you have slated for the interviews. I know that we had, when we originally brought this up, instituted, I believe, like a replacement person on that board. I'm not sure whether there's a desire to either change the date, and I know we're trying to get this pushed early so I could do it, or whether we want to maybe have that person slip in that role.
Yeah, I think that what our goal was is try to get this done before hiatus. That way, if that particular individual needs to put, you know, two weeks, 30 days of notice in, we want to make sure they had ample time. That's about the time we were going to be coming back from hiatus. So I think our goal was to try to have an individual at least in place by then. Councilmember Hayden?
Mayor, what's the process going to be after we interview the five? Will it be similar to how we do appointments to committees? Will we bring it before council and list our top pick and go from there, or is that the?
Yeah, that was my understanding when we were speaking with HR is once we do these interviews, then on our June 15th meeting, we will have an agenda item and have a discussion and very similar to, like we did tonight with picking our top choice until we get a majority vote.
Okay, sure. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
So it sounds like Councilmember Long will be not present next week, is that?
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right.
Not next week, the week of the 15th.
Well, yeah, the week.
Yep.
Yep, I'm sorry. Everyone else available? Okay, what I'll do is I'll have Connie set appointments up on the 13th and 14th. Please reach out to her that she can set those appointments up that'll accommodate your schedule on those two days. The second item of discussion that we've been having each meeting here, the last couple of meetings, we appointed Ms. Grenglin in our office to the assistant city, I'm sorry, the assistant office manager slash mayor's executive assistant. And I think that there was some information that was requested by some council members that was given out to all of us. Ms. Connie's hourly rate is $25.06 an hour now, which has a base salary of $52,124.80. As most of you probably remember, back on a September 21st, 2021 special meeting, we applied a one-time bonus or stipend of $3,000. So if you add the $3,000 to the $52,124.80, then that gives you a combined current rate of pay of $55,124.80. So I will open the floor up for any discussions. I think we have to determine a rate of pay and have a motion on that tonight. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I was on from the last time, but I'll start. And I'll kind of reiterate what I said the first time, I think fair compensation for this particular job with the added managerial assignments and based on her pay would be $60,000.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I still, I apologize as I'm reading this, I don't see where she is in terms of the 75th percentile. And again, I said it last time, I'd feel more comfortable if we were a little closer to that. Is Ms. Sanego here that she can?
Yep, she's here.
Can you tell us, Ms. Sanego, where Ms. Grenglin is in terms of our 75th percentile?
Lisa Sanego, Human Resources Director. 75th percentile is where we place our pay ranges. Individuals within, if we were to place an individual themselves within their range, that would be the third quartile, the top of the third quartile of the pay range. If that is a goal, the, for them, for her to be part of that pay range, I could, I could figure that out. I have to make sure I have that information here. But how we utilize the 75th percentile is that we take the minimum and the maximum of the pay range. That's how we set the actual pay range, not necessarily individuals to their pay. But if that is something that you have interest in.
I just want to see where she is. And I understand that, it's just, you know, the more I'm, the more I've sat through other negotiations, the more I'm learning that, you know, we want to try to be competitive. And my concern is, especially with the job market the way it is, and unemployment so low, you know, I just want to be able to retain good employees. And, you know, I see that in my private work as well, so I just, I just would be curious where she is in that range.
Yeah, I'm looking to see here, looks like she is, she's at 52, that she is close in between the, she's just below midpoint between, minimum is 47, midpoint is 62. If she's at 52, she is in the, just above the first quartile currently.
What gives, what is at 75th?
Third quartile of this would be in between $62,076. So we would take half of that. What is that difference here? Let's do quick math. 52, 76 is 14, so seven. 69, $69,000.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear what Councilmember Hayden's saying, but I would feel much more comfortable getting her closer to that 75th or as close as everybody else is comfortable with, because again, with the job market the way that it is, you know, I just don't want to lose good people. And I feel like, you know, we're at risk for doing that, and she's such a valuable teammate, I mean, incredible to us. You know, she's juggled so much with all the changes that we've had in our office. So that would be my recommendation, if we could get her as close to 75th as, as folks are comfortable with, maybe, you know, bringing her up to 67, 65, 66, I'm not sure. But that, that would be my, my recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Could you, Lisa, could you tell us what the, for MB 109, what that pay rate is?
The, I was work, I was looking at MB 108, so our non-bargaining 109, apologies, I'm working through my computer on this here, let me get to that pay range.
And while you're looking at that, bringing that up, one thing I just wanted to mention, you know, I think we only have one other employee.
Correct.
In the city at MB 109, and that's the executive assistant to the city manager. And if you look at the data that was provided, I think Councilmember Welsh had requested this information. Great information, Councilmember Welsh, I thank you for asking for that. It looks like her salary is about $61,339.20. We also have a ordinance in place, and if you look at rate of pay for reclassifications, two dash 37.8, and I will read a section out of that. Shall receive a rate of pay increase of 5% for each pay grade that he or she has reclassified, but not more than a total increase of 10%. For the purposes of this section, the total percent increase shall be applied to the employer's current rate of pay to determine the amount of increase. My interpretation of current rate of pay is all monies that the employee is receiving at this time. And if you look at the information that was provided, you have base salary, you have the bonus, and you have the current rate of pay if you add the two together. So I think the first question we need to ask ourselves, when you read the ordinance, which says for the purposes of this section, the total percent increase shall be applied to the employee's current rate of pay to determine the amount of increase, I think the first question we need to ask ourselves, what's your definition of current rate of pay? My definition is all monies that the individual is receiving at the time. So if that's the case, then it would be $55,124.80 is her current rate of pay. And if you read the ordinance, then we have a minimum of a 5% and a maximum of 10%. So if you, if you do those numbers, the 5% would be about $57,881.04, 10% would be $60,637.88, close to what Councilmember Hayden, Hayden said. So I would have to concur because of, with Councilmember Hayden, because that's what the ordinance says. And I feel that any employee, no matter if it's in our office or anywhere else in the city. else in the city, we have to apply the principles and the ordinance like it's stated. Now, if at some point in time, we want to look at a range adjustment for anybody as MB one oh eight, MB one oh nine, I'm not saying we can't do that. But I think tonight, we have to go by the ordinance that's already in place. And we have to be within the confines of those numbers. So with that being said, anywhere from the sixty thousand to the sixty thousand six thirty-seven eighty-eight, I could support.
I mean, I don't have an issue with that, Mayor. I just, and I apologize because I don't have it in this electronic form, so if there was the ordinance, I did not read that and I apologize. But I don't have an issue with that. I mean, if it's in the ordinance, you're right. We have to abide by it. So I would say yes, you know, I would agree with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Lisa the question is due to determination or even maybe the city attorney. When you deal with rate of pay, I know we gave that as a special one-time bonus. So how do you feel as that is the rate of pay for the city employee at the current standing? Do you see the rate of pay as being the, what you have listed here, fifty-two one twenty-four? Or do you see it as the fifty-five one twenty-four number?
How we apply, when we're looking at promotional aspect to your question, we would look at the fifty-two when we apply through. There is the extraordinary circumstances in two dash thirty-seven eight B, where extraordinary circumstances merit such consideration may establish rate of pay for an employee. I believe in either situation, if you're looking at this sixty thousand dollar kind of mark, you're five or ten, maybe just a little bit over that, no matter how you're looking at that base. And so looking at that B may be appropriate for you, but utilizing your logic for the sixty would not be inappropriate.
So my opinion is, we gave that, what I'm calling a bonus to Connie because of her extraordinary work that she did while we were short one employee in our office. And she took on a role that was more so to what she's going to be doing now, but we are going to be gaining that employee here pretty soon, being that we have stuff coming this week. And I'm more for what's fair for everybody. And I would prefer to take the number that her current rate of pay is, aside from the bonus, the fifty-two one twenty-four, and add the full ten percent, which to me brings it to fifty-seven three oh six. And we all have this opportunity next year, when we do our evaluations, to adjust her rate of pay accordingly. But I would like to keep what her current rate of pay was and follow what the ordinance says, because that was given to us by previous council, which is minimum of five and up to ten, and do that ten percent now, which brings her somewhere between the, pretty much almost halfway between the medium, the minimum and the midpoint range for an MB one oh nine. So as much as I love Connie and would love to give her more money, I think we need to be fair to the other workers in the city that don't have the opportunity to have council decide their pay rate. They're set by contracts and things like that, and I would like to stick with that across the board. So my number would be somewhere in the fifty-seven three oh six to fifty-seven eight ninety-seven, somewhere around there, whatever that number is, that comes to the full ten percent, and go with that. And then, like I said, we have the opportunity next year to evaluate how she's done and go further with a different increase. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard?
I agree with a lot that was said. Connie's an extreme asset to all of us, and I believe that even after a lot of us are gone, she'll be an asset to future council people. But I think that we have to set the right precedence for the future when we're not here. So one thing that was said was she's an assistant to the mayor. So maybe there could be an amount of money that's given to someone in the office when they're the assistant, is added to their pay structure. Because years from now, when we have a different mayor, he might pick someone else. And maybe there should be a, you know, an amount of money that's added to their salary when they, you know, when they're the assistant to the mayor, because there's that much more task and responsibility. I don't know, it's just a thought. But I agree with everyone, you know, Connie is awesome and I believe she deserves more money. But at the same time, I think we're setting a precedence for the future on how this is done. So I just wanted to bring in that one point, you know, should there be a figure that goes along with, you know, any mayor that decides one of the three people in the office is going to be his assistant? So that's my only idea to all of it. That's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure council's aware what my intent was going to be moving forward. Once we get the other staff member up and running, we know that's going to be a little bit of time. My goal was to have primary responsibilities for staff. And when I say that, very similar to when I came here originally in two thousand and seventeen, whoever sat on the mayor's side of the room pretty much handled the council members on that side. So that would be myself, Councilmember for District One, District Two, and Councilmember Hayden.
Whatever your district is.
I don't know your, I can't remember your district now. But so, and then the new individual, primary responsibility would be the other side of the room. Not saying that any one of the other can't help someone within the office. I think we should have primary responsibilities. And then because, as we all know, in my opinion, we're kind of overworking Connie. She's definitely stepped up to the plate. She's basically doing the job of two people. So I want to make sure that we have some equalness amongst staff in the office. And of course, James will be able to help either one of them pass administrative tasks that they may give them.
So you're saying you want Connie to owe yourself?
No, by far not. You know, I think, I kind of explained, I think everybody on that side of the room should be a primary responsibility. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I agree. I'll be brief. I think Connie's an incredible asset in what she's done the last year or two. You know, she was rewarded in the bonus, but I think it's time to have this discussion. It would be my desire to, to whatever extent we're legally able to do with regards to the ordinance and the cap, to get that number as close to that sixty thousand figure that the mayor had indicated. Thank you.
Councilmember Tate?
I would agree with that. We gave her the bonus last year when she was working with two people in the office. And since then, she has been working solo for all of us. So to me, you have to count the fifty-five because there's just no way she's working for eight people all the time. And she has been for almost a year now. So I would support the, as close to sixty thousand as we can get within legal limits of the ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we change the rate of pay to, well, Lisa, let me ask you this first. What is the legal amount, based on the ordinance, that we can do as close to sixty thousand? The way I had it was fifty-seven something. Do we need to actually come up with a number?
Two thousand six hundred thirty-seven?
Yeah, I think you got to, I think we have to ask the question to ourselves, the rate of pay, is that base salary or is that total rate of pay? That's the question that you have to ask yourself. Then that will tell you the five to ten percent. I think I've, you know, some of us have said the fifty-five, some of us have said the fifty-two to base it on. So that's a decision.
Well, I was basing it on the fifty-five because I felt like this stipend that we gave her last year in September, she's been working solo since then.
Well, if you base it on that, fifty-five would be, I'm sorry, five percent of that would be fifty-seven eight eighty-one oh four.
But we can go to ten percent.
Ten percent would be sixty thousand six thirty-seven eighty-eight, if I read my.
Sixty thousand six thirty-seven.
Six thirty-seven eighty-eight.
Okay. And then the other part of your question was, I have to decide if that's her base or if that's her total.
Oh, that's, I mean, you can make a motion.
So Lisa, can you help me out with that?
How we apply it at the city is we would utilize her actual base. The special compensation is usually for a period of time based on extra work that is being done in whatever manner, whatever is applied for, for that special compensation. It's usually intended for a specific period of time, which I believe it was in Connie's situation, and the factor that some other individual, other vacancies and other situations occurred. So that's what the special comp was for. The base pay for her actual job has been that fifty-two number. If you would like to add that three thousand as far as a logic piece, I understand that. And if you want to utilize that as a base and then apply that five and ten percent, we could look at it that way.
Okay. Then that would be my motion for the sixty thousand six thirty-seven eighty-eight.
I'll second. Councilmember Long?
No, that was, I'll allow this to continue forward and then.
Councilmember Welsh, did you have enough? Yes, I do. I do want to add on to that because all of us were in the room when we were discussing this, when we were talking about pay raises and doing evaluations. And when we did the evaluations, I was the only one that was there that said I would prefer to raise Connie's base rate over giving her the bonus. Everyone else in the room jumped on board by giving her a huge bonus. So what we're doing now, and I'm not saying I don't want, and I don't think that Connie deserves the money that she does, we're doing now is we're going back on what we said. We gave Connie the bonus for the extra work that she was doing. And the way the ordinance is written says that we can only go ten percent over base rate. So what we're doing is we're changing what we think the ordinance says. So I'd rather stay strict to the ordinance and give the bonus on the fifty-two one twenty-four of ten percent to upgrade her pay range, which is what the ordinance allows us to do. And then come the time that we have the opportunity to review and give pay raises to our staff, we use that time to change the rate closer to the sixty thousand. So not that I'm not in support of giving Connie what I believe she deserves. I believe I supported her in that when we had our meeting on it, and I was voted against. So I might be the only one that votes against this now, but I just want it to be said and understood that it's not because of Connie, but it's because of the way that we're doing it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
Well, the ordinance also says we have the ability to go beyond that if there are other circumstances involved. And those other circumstances are involved is she's picking up a supervisory title. She's going to be managing two people. Those are roles she didn't have in the past. So to me, that gives us the opportunity to take the pay where it should be, which is what the motion and the second is on the table, it's sixty thousand six. So I think that's more than fair. And since we have the ability to do that through ordinance, I think it's the right thing to do.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say the exact same thing, Councilmember Hayden. And also, I just want to remind that second part of the ordinance that talks about, you know, we have discretion under extraordinary circumstances. And again, we need to consider this, this climate, you know, this climate right now in our workforce and our lowest unemployment in years, you know, to me, that's extraordinary. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? See, a nun. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Nay.
Austin?
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. Motion carried.
Thank you. I believe that was all the items under the council office personnel item. So move on to item ninety, file items from city management, Madam Assistant City Manager. It looks like it's water quality update.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe Maya Robert is here to do an update on the water quality.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Maya Robert, Public Works. Not much happening on Lake Okeechobee. There's no algae blooms in the Kalusahatchee River. For the freshwater bloom that affects, or was affecting six freshwater canals, the whole system was treated last week. We followed up with water quality sampling today. I would like to note that there's a typo on the table with the toxin results instead of microgram per liter. It's actually nanograms per liter, so it's a thousand times less. And so to give you an idea, the detection limit and what we've been detecting is actually thirty thousand times less than what the Environmental Protection Agency is recommending as Recreation Waters Alert. However, the state has cut, the limit has, whenever a toxin is, can be detected, then there should be an alert. And as you know, we didn't get much input from the state agency, so we made the decision to put alert signs as long as we could detect those toxins. So we're very, we're being extra, extra cautious there. Water quality in the system has increased greatly, so we're very happy with the treatment. And we will address all the other points we mentioned before to you, addressing the source and fixing the issue. One thing I wanted to mention quickly, it seems that it's happening every year for the past couple of years. So there's a widening event in Matlachipass, which is all the algae mats coming up at the top. And there's a chemical and microbiological reaction going on there. So there's smells and there's mats of algae floating. You might hear about it a little bit later. So just wanted to give you a heads up. The bubble curtains, no update. We received an email from the agency, the Department of Environmental Protection this afternoon, and we're going to follow up to see where we are and when we can get that permit. That's it. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for the update. Item ten is ordinance resolution, ten A is public hearings, ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use for property described as lots nine through twelve, block forty-five fifty-five, unit sixty-eight, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at eight hundred Southwest Eighth Place and eight seventeen Southwest Eighth Street, providing severability and an effective date.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Daltry Plan Team Coordinator of the city's Plan Division. My credentials may be obtained at the city clerk's office. What we have for you today is a city-initiated future land use map amendment, just over half an acre from commercial professional to multifamily residential future land use. Site is located in southwestern quadrant of Cape Coral, just west of Skyline Boulevard, approximately half a mile south of the intersection of Skyline Pine Island Road. This is an aerial of the two properties in question. One of the properties is developed, single-family residence. As you can see on the aerial, there's sporadic residential developments, particularly to the north and south and west. Properties to the east are vacant as you get closer to Skyline Boulevard. Across, further to the east, Skyline Boulevard is a church. This is the, these maps indicate the current and proposed future land use of the property in the surrounding area. The two subject parcels, as you can see, have a commercial-professional future land use classification indicated red. They are bordered on both sides, the north and south, by multifamily indicated in brown. Additional multifamily properties can be found east of the subject parcels and north across a canal. Commercial-professional properties are across the local road, Southwest Eighth Place to the east, entire block with frontage on Skyline Boulevard. Properties in yellow, which make up most of the properties nearby, are single-family residential. They're found generally to the south of the subject parcels and also to the west. A property in light blue, further to the east is that church site with public facilities, future land use. The map on the right shows what would happen, what would occur if this ordinance was to be adopted, basically removing that fragment of commercial-professional, replacing it with multifamily and having multifamily basically strip, or continue to strip to Skyline Boulevard. Some background, site's southwest Cape Coral, two properties, one's developed, been commercial-professional since two thousand and nineteen, but prior to that, had a commercial activity center future land use. So hasn't been, hasn't had a residential designation for the last twelve years. Properties had a commercial zoning since two thousand and nineteen, marketplace residential, which was the precursor to today's neighborhood commercial since two thousand and ten. So it's, again, it's not been a residential site for about twelve years now. Relatively recently, about a year, perhaps a little bit longer than a year ago, ordinance sixteen twenty-one amended properties that were to the east of these from commercial-professional to multifamily, but didn't continue further west and south to include these two properties. Properties are located on a local road, as you saw in the map series, between multifamily Properties are located on a local road, as you saw in the map series, between multifamily future land use properties. They also lack visibility from Skyline Boulevard. Staff analyzed this, requested in accordance with our multifamily residential siting guidelines and policy 1.7 of our future land use settlement, and admit all four of those siting guidelines. To conclude this proposed, which is consistent with that policy, therefore, to conclude, proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval. We've received one letter of public correspondence and opposition. This was presented to the Planning Zoning Commission back on May 4th, and that commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. I'll stand by for any questions.
Okay, now a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 38-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 38-22?
So move. Second.
Council discussion, Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, Wyatt, if you could, did we reach out to the property owner that has the single-family home there to find out if they were willing to change this?
We did not, no. However, with a multi-
If I remember, a year ago, what I'm trying to say is that the other company that assembled the three lots, I had previously tried to reach out to the two in the middle and were unable to get them to agree to change to a multifamily zoning. And it seems now what they've done is they've kind of pinched property owners into getting what they wanted, which was multifamily on all four, or all five. So it's tough for me, if we didn't reach out or let the property owner know, to find out if their true intention was to change to multifamily, or does it seem like we're just going back as a city and finishing what couldn't be done?
Well, this was, again, a city-initiated case. Just to remind council, single-family residences are permitted in the multifamily future land use and multifamily zoning, if it's RML, which would be the use, that'd be the zoning for this area. So we're just exercising our police power as a government to provide a land use classification that, in this case, is really appropriate. If this had a shot of being a workable commercial site, we wouldn't be doing this. It's our opinion, strong opinion, that that's not the case, though.
Yeah, I understand. I just, I kind of feel like I wish we would have reached out to the homeowner, because if, knowing the background on it, that they weren't for joining that group before, maybe finding out the information. So maybe the next time, if there are homeowners, reach out to find out if they truly wanted it to stay commercial. I know we're fixing a lot of these problems, and we have another one here tonight where a gentleman has his home in a commercial and wants it back to single-family, but it would have been easier or just a little bit better to reach out to the homeowner. Thank you.
And my question, Wyatt, would be, when we have a zoning change like that, do we post signs? Do we send out?
Absolutely. Basically, we provide notice in the paper. We also post a sign on the property. That's a requirement in our land development code.
And do we send notices out within a certain amount of-
500 feet radius, including the property owners or the subject site of the change in question.
So with that being said, then we did send a notice to the property owner?
Yes, I mean, we did not call them specifically, that, which was my understanding of Councilmember Welsh's question. But yes, they did receive some sort of correspondence from us.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Move on to ordinance 39-22. Madam City Clerk, please read title.
Ordinance 39-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to single-family land use for property described as lots one through 48, block 3633, unit 49, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 125 through 231, Chiquita Boulevard South, and 124 through 230, Southwest 15th Place, providing severability and an effective date.
Mr. Daltry?
All right, good evening again, Wyatt Daltry, Plan Team Coordinator. This is a city-initiated future land use amendment involving five and a half acres. It's an entire block, the entirety of block 3633. The request is to amend the future land use from commercial-professional to the single-family future land use properties, have a dress in frontage on Chiquita Boulevard. This is located also in the southwestern quadrant of Cape Coral, just east of Chiquita Boulevard, about half mile south of the intersection of Chiquita and Embers Parkway. This is an aerial of the subject property. As you can see there, there are nine structures on that block out of, I believe, 23 parcels. Sporadic development, single-family development, particularly to the west, to the east, north of Southwest 2nd Street, and across the canal further to the north as you go towards Embers Parkway. A large tract of land, which is currently vacant, and has a land use of multifamilies located to the east on the other side of Southwest 15th Place. Here are the current and proposed future land use maps. Map on the left indicates the area in red and being changed to yellow with the map on the right. So, single-family for this block would match those properties north of and east of these, of the subject block. Commercial-professional located to the west across Chiquita Boulevard and to the south. There are multifamily properties, as I alluded to before, east of the subject property. And as you go further away from this area, you have properties with a Pine Island Road District and CAC further to the southwest. Properties of the single-family, multifamily designation further to the northwest. Some background, site, again, it's northwest Cape Coral with the southwest Cape Coral address. 23 properties on the block, nine of which are developed with single-family homes. Property has been commercial-professional since 2019, but was commercial activity center since 2005. In fact, this was one of the first areas identified by the city and mapped with a commercial activity center future land use classification. It should be noted that no commercial activity has occurred or been proposed for this block since that time in 2005. So the single-family homes from that time, I think the most, last one that was built was about 2005. Council had directed staff to move forward with amendment for this block at the March 30th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, after receiving testimony from the public. As I mentioned, nine single-family residences. These are non-conforming uses with the commercial-professional land use and commercial zoning. We had analyzed this request in accordance with our commercial development siting policy, that's policy 1.14 of the future land use settlement, and find that these, this block is a weak candidate. Meets two of the eight guidelines, partially met a third, but five of which were failed. So, as a result, we feel the proposed amendment to single-family residential is consistent with the comprehensive plan due to the fact that commercial is really not a good fit for this block. Staff recommends approval. We've received four letters of public correspondence and support of this amendment request. And like the previous amendment, this was presented to Planning and Zoning Commission on May 4th, whereupon the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the land use amendment request. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Now, a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 39-22? Please come forward. Sir, you can use the podium right there.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council of Cape Coral, my name is Dean Jewell, 128 Southwest 15th Place. And I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come and see you tonight and ask for your support on this approval of this recommendation, the zoning change. Lacter Beemery, done, done, done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 39-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 39-22?
So move.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Move on to ordinance 50-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 50-22, an ordinance approving the sale of municipal surplus real property described as lots 38 and 39, block 2986, Cape Coral, unit 42, Part 1, pursuant to Section 2-155 of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to execute a deed conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Danny Garcia. Property located at 1231 Northwest 20th Terrace, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Good evening, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Dawn Andrews with the Public Works Property Management Division. Ordinance 50-22 is for the approval of a contract offer from Danny Garcia. The property is located at 1231 Northwest 20th Terrace in unit 42, Part 1. The contract is for the sale of a two-lot off-water site located just south of the North RO plant. In May last year, the city council voted to approve a sale of this property to Mr. Garcia in the amount of $15,500, which was at the time above the appraisal price. We had competing contract offers at that time. During the closing process, the title company determined that the city did not have clear title to the property and called for a probate to be completed on the previous owner of the property. The property had been transferred to the city in 1993 by the wife of a deceased owner who was living in Switzerland. The title issue didn't get resolved before the contract had expired, which requires a new contract be brought forward to the city council for approval. The city has continued to hold the buyer's $5,000 escrow department, uh, department, I'm sorry, escrow deposit, excuse me. Mr. Garcia has continued to want to buy the property because he's planning to build a home on the site as his business partner lives in the block to the west, and had requested that we enter into a new contract. The purchase price on the contract is the same as the contract in May of 2021, with the exception that the buyer, Mr. Garcia, will now pay the closing costs to clear the title. Mr. Garcia is in the audience if you have any questions of him, and I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Now, open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 50-22? Please come forward.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I appreciate you taking the time for me. I was looking to purchase this property back in May of 2021. I currently have a newborn child, seven months old. I wanted to move to Cape Coral to have a better support system with my grandparents and my fiance's parents living in Cape Coral, and we wanted to just move there. And I would really like the opportunity to purchase this property. And, you know, I tried to do everything that I could on my power to make sure that everything went forward, but it seemed a few things went, fell through the crack, and just would really like the opportunity to purchase the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 50-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 50-22?
So move.
Second. Council discussion, Councilmember Tate.
Dawn, you said that the buyer's going to be paying the additional closing costs? Can you tell us what that is so we can just see what that amount was?
Okay, so, so we've spoken with the title company. They were requesting a probate of us, but they said that we could get a, they would accept a suit for quiet title, which will run probably anywhere from $2,500 to $3,000.
Okay, and the buyer is paying for that?
And the buyer is paying that, yes.
Another question?
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews, move on to item 10B, introductions, ordinance 55-22. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 55-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 19 through 44, block A, Whispering Pines subdivision, an unrecorded subdivision, lying in Section 10 Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, from agricultural to neighborhood commercial zone. Property is located at 801 through 862 Larch Road, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be June 15, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 57-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 57-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan based upon revisions to Florida statutes and the state mandated evaluation and appraisal analysis process by amending the capital improvement element, the conservation and coastal management element, the housing element, the future land use element, the infrastructure element, the intergovernmental coordination element, the recreation and open space element, the transportation element, the economic development element, and the public school facilities element, all as described in the attached exhibits A through J. Amending the comprehensive plan list of maps as depicted in the attached exhibits K through R, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing for transmittal will be June 15, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 56-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 56-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 19, Water and Sewer Utilities, Article 7 Water Management, Section 19-90, Irrigation Water Usage, by amending the days and times irrigation water shall be allowed, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be June 15, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 58-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 58-22, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5 million in principal amount of a note to finance the acquisition of various vehicles and equipment for the city's fire and police departments, providing for a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-advalorem revenues to pay the principal of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the note, providing for the rights of the holder of such note, and providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be June 15, 2022.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 51-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 51-22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Cape Coral Rowing Club, Inc., for the lease of property owned by the City of Cape Coral, being a portion of tract E, block 6403, Cape Coral, unit 76, The Islands, as described herein, located in the seven islands for the operation of a paddle sport training area, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be June 15, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Welsh, report? No report. Councilmember Cosden, report?
Yes, just a couple of things. On the 27th, I attended the youth council meeting as the council liaison, and I also attended the Memorial Day ceremony at Coral Ridge, and it was great as usual. It was the 41st annual ceremony. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
No report.
Councilmember Long?
I'll report, and I stated previously, was that I will not be here for the June 15 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. As committed a couple of weeks ago, I committed to attending the Southwest Florida Resiliency Compact meeting, which I did last Friday at the Collaboratory along with Maya Robert. And we learned a lot in the three-hour meeting that we were there. I know I had mentioned previously that we had Collier County and Lee County who had taken a pause in the compact, but I was happy to see that we had attendees there from both of those counties. One of the things that we talked about was maybe changing the direction and not necessarily being a compact, but more so being a coalition or a committee. We talked about things like multi-government entities doing some cost sharing for things like resiliency efforts, given that our visit from Urban Land Institute indicated that we really needed to factor some resiliency efforts- Given that our, our visit from Urban Land Institute indicated that we really needed to factor some resiliency efforts, given the makeup of our city, I think moving forward, this will be a valuable place to learn about some opportunities. So I just wanted to give that information. I also attended the Memorial Day Celebration at Coral Woods. Chuck Warren and his team did a fantastic job, as always. It was great to see the mayor and some other council members there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd, report.
No report.
Councilmember Tate?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a very interesting event. I was asked to speak at the Student Government Association, part of the youth council for Norfolk Myers High School. It was very rewarding, and we encouraged a couple of students. I think Councilmember Hayden is going to help get one of the students a little bit more involved. It was, it was very encouraging, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Hayden for encouraging all those students because the youth council is really doing so well. I also went to the boat naming with Fire Chief. I'm glad I did not go on the ride, but the boat naming was really great. I did attend the Memorial Day Service as well, and I wanted to shout out to the Island Coast High School baseball team, who are the state champions. I think that's awesome that we have them in our city. And finally, I wanted to remind everyone to buy your tickets for the 60th anniversary of the Cape Coral Yacht Club. June 10th, 1962 was its actual opening date, and that is the night of our event. So it's going to be very exciting, and you can buy your tickets at capecoralmuseum.org. Thank you.
Thank you. My report on May 19th, I attended the Southwest Florida Legacy Meeting in LaBelle on 5/20. I attended the Urban Land Institute Advisory Service Panel Stakeholders Result Meeting, like all of us did. 5/20, I attended the Oasis High School graduation ceremony. It was great seeing the kids graduate high school over at, we had the ceremony over at Gulf Coast University. 5/23, I attended a budget review meeting. 5/23 also, I attended the press conference. Governor Ron DeSantis came to Cape Coral, about to give the press conference. 5/24, also attended the boat naming ceremony for our new fireboat. 5/24, attended the employee celebration fellowship. Just want to commend staff. That was an excellent celebration that they put together for, for the employees. It was quite impressive. 5/25, presented a proclamation for National Boat Safeties Week here at City Hall in the Courtyard for the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. And on 5/26, I also attended the award ceremony for our Special Olympics Motor Activity Training Program, which is here in Cape Coral, and I have to say that quite impressive what the employees do there for, for the residents of our community. 5/26, I was also a guest speaker at the Santa Vala Home Menders Association. On Memorial Day, I also attended and presented a proclamation for the Cape Coral Ridge Funeral Home, their 41st Annual Memorial Day Remembrance Service, another great event as always. Also attended the Brotherhood of Heroes Museum. They also had a memorial event there. And for the 1,500 ringing of the bell at, on Memorial Day, I attended the VFW Club down in downtown Cape Coral. 5/31, I attended another meeting here in Cape Coral. This morning, I presented a proclamation for a code enforcement officers appreciation week. Thank them for the service that they contribute to, to our city each and every day. One last thing, and I, I think Councilmember Hayden may have mentioned this in our last meeting. Island Coast High School is the first Lee County school to be recognized and become the state baseball champions. So.
It was a school.
First public school, yes. So it's going to be.
How is you?
I think there, there may be an event coming soon that we'll be able to recognize them. That's all I have. Madam City Attorney, you have a report?
I have no report.
And Madam Assistant City Manager?
Yes, good evening, council. I, I have a few items for you. But first of all, I just want to assure and reassure council that it is never the intent of your staff to not keep you informed on any issue or any matter that will come before you. To the extent that that occurred with the rowing club lease, I do want to extend our apologies for that. I can tell you that your staff was continuing what had been an ongoing good faith effort to make accommodations for the rowing club. And we should have probably done a better job of making sure that all of you were informed of that process as it was going on. So we, we heard your concerns and, and we took them to, to heart. Secondly, now, I do have a request to schedule two shade meetings with City Council. The first shade meeting is being requested on June the 8th at 3:00 p.m., if possible, to discuss union negotiations. So.
And if I'm not mistaken, we are already meeting on June the 9th and June the 10th for budget conversations, and June the 10th may not take all day? Is that, is that my understanding?
Perhaps, yes. That would be correct. That would be our hope that we could accomplish quite a bit on the night.
Mayor, June 8th at 4 o'clock is the unveiling of the CRA. And so do you think we would be done by the time with union negotiations, within that 30 minutes to get down?
Let me just double check with our HR director to see whether or not we could do it a couple of days later. Lisa?
Or move it up just an hour so we can go to the CRA event?
Yeah, or, you know, we're already going to be here on the 9th.
Yeah, I know, so.
I'd rather do it on the 9th.
Or the 10th.
I know we'll be at Palmetto Pines. So the next question is, can we have a shade meeting? I know there's a, a smaller room that is available, but that would have to be the, maybe a question for City Attorney.
Kimberly, are you aware of that there's a side room there that we might be able to use for our?
There is. They may have some food stacked in there. That was our, our food area, but there isn't a side room that has a closed door.
Yeah, they, they told us last night they're only open on Wednesdays now, in that side room. They don't open any other time.
So I received permission from Palmetto Pines to use that side room because we are going to provide lunch to council, and I don't have an idea of how many people from the public are going to show. So the budget only accommodates for lunch for council. So I have, I do have that room reserved.
You know, for me personally, we already have 9th and 10th slated to be here, so. I agree. I would prefer to do it one of those days, but I'll do what the majority.
Can we do it on the 10th? Then we could go into the shade. That's what I was thinking.
Would you prefer to do it?
I'm sure you'll have to set a time.
I know, I think, I think you're getting ready to schedule, well, the meetings are already scheduled for the budget retreat, correct? Would they be able to do it right before? Or would you rather wait until the end of the one on the 10th?
I'm okay with doing it on the 10th, maybe at 1:00 o'clock, because when I spoke with the city manager, he didn't feel that it was going to be all day on the second day. So if that's the case, then we could come back here, start the meeting, and have it here then, if, if that's easier for staff. It's up to you, however you do.
So I may, if I may suggest, on the 10th, a start time of 12, does, it doesn't mean you have to start at exactly 12, but it's, it's a starting point. And then when it's time for you to roll into lunch at Palmetto Pine, you could have your lunch and do your shade meeting and stay at the property.
Okay. That works for me.
All right, so 6:10. Okay, great.
6:10 at noon at Palmetto Pine.
Ms. Nega, does that, does that work for you? I guess, I know sometimes there's, with these things, that there's some time restrictions. So just want to make sure the 10th works for you as well.
Lisa Sonego, HR Director, the, the 10th would be fine.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll have a shade meeting scheduled for June the 10th at 12:00 o'clock. Madam City Attorney, do we need a motion for that?
I think you could just do it with a consensus of council, or you could do it by a motion.
Consensus, everybody's okay with that? Okay. And you had another date you wanted to discuss?
Yes. Per Florida statutes regarding unsolicited P3s, I'm requesting a shade meeting to discuss an unsolicited proposal that we have received. We would like to schedule that for June the 15th, which would be two weeks from today, preferably right before your council meeting.
So would you like to do that at 3:00 p.m.? So June the 15th at 3:00 p.m. for another shade meeting? Is there a consensus for that as well? Okay, I know Councilmember Long won't be here, so he's totally in favor of it. So, okay, I think there's a consensus for, for that particular date and time.
And then I'd also, Chief Lamb is here, so I've asked him to come and, and give everyone an update on the weather situation coming up in the tropics.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief. See if I can get the Almo up. So as we are tracking now, Invest Low 91 will likely become Tropical Depression, the Tropical Storm Alex, as it enters the Atlantic Basin. You can see we're tracking a number of things. You know, welcome to hurricane season, day one. We've already got some things to look at. We will anticipate that it's about a 70% chance over the next 48 hours that this will continue to develop, and about, within five days, an 80% chance. However, it's an 80% chance to get to a tropical storm, only a 5% chance to get to a category one hurricane. As it comes across the Yucatan Peninsula right now, there's a lot of things we're continuing to watch, mainly this high-pressure system that is sitting above the Panhandle right now, and that will kind of depict on how far north or south this, this storm continues to move forward. There's a great deal of wind shear, and so that's one of the things that's limiting its development moving forward. Pushing through here quickly, as far as potential for our area seeing some of these impacts, we're talking late Saturday into Sunday would be our potential timing for, for that, beginning to see some of those bands on Friday. Just depends on how much this thing strengthens and what, where it moves forward. Locally, right now, the anticipated impact for us is somewhere between three to four inches of localized rain. So primarily a rain-making event for our area. So we'll continue to watch and monitor. I believe we're going to start putting out flash reports as of tomorrow morning will be our first, our first flash report. We also coincidentally have our internal hurricane kickoff meeting that we'll be doing with staff tomorrow morning following our directors' meeting. So we're continuing to watch, no action needed at this time, but we'll continue to put out information. We're continuing to meet and work together with staff from communications, from, we heard that loud and clear, from the, the Cow meeting, to making sure that we've got accurate, timely information. Questions?
Any questions for Chief Lamb? Thank you, sir, for the update. Okay, time and place of future meetings. We have a summer retreat. I'm sorry, you got another?
I had a few things today.
Sorry.
In preparation for our budget retreat next Thursday and Friday, you will be receiving the preliminary budget tomorrow afternoon. Financial Service Director Mark Mason, his staff has been preparing that. We've made a few tweaks on it now, just as of today, based on the information received from the property appraisers office. So you can expect to have that tomorrow afternoon to look over. And then I save the best for last. I wanted to introduce to you our new Economic Development Manager, Sharon Woodbury. She's been sitting here through her first council meeting.
Is she still here?
Yeah, that's right.
Very good.
Her first day was, her first day was Tuesday. Sharon, actually, she, when we interviewed her, we discovered after the interview, because we were just having some just casual discussion, that she actually owns, owned property here in Cape Coral and has owned property down here for a number of years. She's from Youngstown, Ohio, has a very interesting story. So I just wanted to introduce Sharon Woodbury to you and have her give her a chance to also introduce herself and give you a little bit of background.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. It's a pleasure to be here. I spent more time with you than I thought that I would this evening. But I'm excited to be here. It was very encouraging to see all of the young people that were present and the youth council, the different activities and passion coming from those that were here in attendance. In the economic development circle, when we're marketing our cities, we're always talking about our assets. And I think your greatest asset, be in addition to the 400 miles of, of canals that you have, it's your people. And so I'm, I'm really excited to be here. As Connie mentioned, it was always our plan to eventually come here. I had purchased my property a few years ago. My husband and I were vacationing here for a few years. The first time we came here, we knew this is where we wanted this to be long-term. So it was my plan to retire here, and things expedited a bit. The opportunity came up for this wonderful job. Happy to be here and looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Okay, anything else? I'm going to check this time first. Okay, we have a summer retreat joint budget workshop scheduled for Thursday, June the 9th at 2022, and Friday, June 10th, 2022, both days beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Palmetto Pines Country Club at 1940 Southwest 9th Court here in Cape Coral. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned.